We certainly appreciate all of the time and effort you put into this, so thank you for doing that. All right, moving on to the agenda. Again, given the way we're conducting the meeting here via Zoom, I don't think it's going to work very well to try to go around the room and do introductions like we would typically do. I think most of us have been on these for quite some time at this point. So that being said, we do want to welcome all of the other folks who are joining us. Some of the folks from the community, Mark Whitney, thank you for your time this evening, we appreciate it. And Dr. Johnson, I think is joining us as well, so all the administrators, thanks for being here for what is probably one of the more important conversations we will ever have as an SCU 16 joint board. And thank you to all the community members, I know there was significant interest, at least that I heard, about people that wanted to observe this meeting, kind of sit in and hear the conversations, hear the plan as it's going to be presented to us here in a moment, and then share some of their questions. So Dr. Ryan, it was good to hear that we had some questions already sent in to you in advance, so certainly glad we can address those this evening as well. So unless there is anything else that any of the board members want to bring up, we will turn this over to Dr. Ryan to get to really what we're here to discuss, the new business. The first item being the Joint Board Budget Advisory Committee. Dr. Ryan, I don't know if you want to speak to that initially, or I know the Joint Board had some conversations at one of our earlier meetings about, again, just maybe a little bit more oversight, a little bit more knowledge about the SAU budget before it gets presented to us as a whole. So I think this was one of the things that we discussed. But Dr. Ryan, do you want to touch on that, or maybe Molly, I'm not sure what your thoughts are?
No, I'm happy to address it, and if Molly wants to join in or fill in some gaps, I'm perfectly comfortable with that as well. In the past couple of years, we've had some significant turnover in our finance office. There have been some changes that have come along with it. We've been able to, I think, improve dramatically the work that we are doing in our business and finance office. We have a new Director of Finance and Operations, as well as an Assistant Director, and they were pretty much hitting the ground running last year. We suffered some bumps and bruises along the way. We want to make sure that we apologize to our boards for any inconveniences or errors that we made while working through last year's budget season. We think that we are in a much better place this year, albeit in a pandemic. But in terms of operations and protocols, in a much better place to move forward. In saying that, however, we want to continue to improve our transparency. We certainly want to continue to improve the communication with our board members, as well as our towns. And I think it starts with the SAU budget. It's an annual budget, it's a little over $2 million a year to operate central office which provides services for seven school districts, six towns, and eight boards. We would like very much to have participation from each of the districts through the SAU Joint Boards, so one representative from each town help us as an advisory committee through the month of August and into September as we prepare the SAU Office Budget. We need that to be approved usually in September, so that our school districts can then have the calculated assessment factored into their budget development plans for the following fiscal year. I know that this was a conversation that came up last year, and we embraced it, and it's something that we want to do. And I know that Travis, you and I have talked about making sure that this got onto an agenda so that we could have people actually participate and get some meetings scheduled. I'll offer up an opportunity for Molly to add to that if she wishes, I can't see her. So if she could verbally acknowledge whether she wants to speak to it or not, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, thanks David. Yeah, David, you did a great job summing it up, and Michelle and I have already started working on it a little bit, and would love the input of all the boards before we present it.
So that's where we would want this group to talk a little bit about, provide some input to what the formation should be. Perhaps this board doesn't wish to provide one board member from each school district. But that's the nuts and bolts of it, so I don't know Travis, how you would want to facilitate securing members, or opening that up to conversation?
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, absolutely. I mean, I think it is something that, and anybody correct me if I misspeak, but I think it was something that we discussed in one of our previous Joint Board meetings about having some type of, you know, a budget advisory committee for the SAU itself. Just to really have a group of individuals that does get down sort of into the weeds of the budget, side by side with Molly and her team, and of course, Dr. Ryan's. So I guess the first thing would be if there's any discussion from other board members about the creation of this type of advisory committee. If anybody has any thoughts or things they want to share. And again, raise a hand or use the chat box to, you know, ping me to let me know that you would like to share any comments. Does anybody have any other thoughts on creating something like this at the SAU level? Yeah, Tim, thank you.
Sure, yeah, I think this idea fits very well both with our discussions earlier in the past academic year, and it also fits well in the outcomes of the superintendent evaluation process.
Thank you, Tim. Certainly would agree with your comments there. Any other thoughts from the other board members about us doing this, their willingness to do it? Everybody seems to be on board. I don't know that we need to vote to create this type of committee, Dr. Ryan, but do we have the board's willingness to have a participant that they choose from each of the boards, you know, put in a few extra hours, so to speak, to be really, you know, hands-on with the SAU budget with Dr. Ryan and Molly? I'm in the room, I see some heads nodding, but I don't see a whole lot else going on there. Maybe a function of the fact that this is not what anybody dialed in to hear us talk about, so Helen, do you have any comments there?
No, thanks Travis. I have no issue at all with creating this committee, I think it's a wonderful idea. I'm just wondering if perhaps with everything we've got going on tonight, with so much on our agenda and what we're dealing with, if it might not be a bad idea to just take a vote to see if everyone's in agreement to create this committee, and then have folks contact Dr. Ryan over the coming days, maybe set a deadline for folks to volunteer to serve on it, as opposed to negotiating whether or not we want to do somebody coming from each board. That's totally the will of this board, though, to decide that.
Yep, I would agree. Okay. So Helen, do you have a motion in mind, or any other board members? Melissa, is that a hand raised? I'm sorry. Okay. Helen, any thoughts on how you'd want to construct that, or?
I'll move to accept the idea of creating a budget advisory committee for the SAU budget for the 21, we're doing 21-22, right? School year, am I correct on that? Wow, all right, yes, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Helen, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jonathan, appreciate that. Any other board members, any further discussion on this? And again, just looking for hands or the chat function, not seeing anything. So just to raise a hand, if you could hold them up so we could get a look while we go around the room, but all those in favor of creating the budget advisory committee for the SAU, please raise your hand for a moment. I am seeing a vast majority of board members with their hands up, if I'm not mistaken. And Melissa does have two votes, so she's got both of those, so it does look like the motion, well, anybody opposed? I guess let's do it the right way. So those were all the in-favor ofs. Anyone opposed to the motion? I see no hands up, so it looks like we have unanimously approved to creating that. With the idea, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, that each individual board at their next meetings will have a conversation about how they choose to have somebody participate in that committee. Does that sound like where we're at with that, everybody?
Terrific, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Ryan, appreciate that, and thank you Molly for sharing your thoughts. Moving on to the next item, the NEA Memorandum of Agreement Negotiator Process, which is critical to us going into next year. Dr. Ryan?
Thank you Travis. Yeah, we certainly are going to be having some changes to working conditions, as you know, and perhaps the over 500 people that are viewing this webinar meeting right now don't know is that we were able to organize a memorandum of agreement for the remainder of last year with all 10 of our associations. And it was the same working conditions and agreements for all of our teachers and staff members, paraprofessionals in all of our school districts. In that we have some time to prepare, in knowing that it is typically a small group from a board that negotiates alongside our Human Resources Assistant Superintendent with each of the unions. We wanted to bring back to this board the question of how you would like to negotiate a memorandum of agreement for this upcoming year. As you can imagine, there are going to be some significant changes to working conditions, some expectations. The NEA would like to negotiate some health and safety protocols for their staff members, so that there are some guaranteed protocols in place. And we would like some direction from this board on whether or not you would like us to facilitate that with the Uniserve Director, much like we did this past spring. If you would like representation from the Joint Board to do that work instead of us, or alongside us, or if each district would like to negotiate its own MOA with its, offer that question for you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Any questions or comments from the board members? Does anybody have any thoughts? Nothing there, so we need some direction. Melissa, yes, thank you. You're still muted, Melissa.
I'm sorry. So I know that we're going to have to dive into this. I actually received as Chair of the Brentwood Board a letter from our teachers' union today, and their words were that they demand, they're demanding that we negotiate a new contract. So this is going to happen. And I personally am not opposed to the SAU being brought to handle it. It's hard because the point the Brentwood Board has not met. So I don't know, I don't know where my board is at at this point, and I'm wondering if many of the other boards are in the same boat, I guess is my point. It's hard for us to say, let's have the SAU handle it, because we haven't discussed it at the individual board level as yet.
I agree.
Who was that, Jonathan, was that you?
Yeah, it's like, how do we handle this, is a good question. It's like, what's the best way, and the it's a difficult spot, but we need to move forward, so what's the quickest and easiest way of doing it legally?
Dr. Ryan or Dr. Campbell, anybody want to touch on that one?
Dr. Campbell, do you want to maybe chime in and give your thoughts about this?
Thanks Dave, thanks Travis. So the working, as Dave suggested, the working conditions will be different from teachers and the collective bargaining agreements that do exist. Much will apply, but some will not apply, so we're under an obligation if we receive a request to bargain, and Melissa, "demand" is a pretty typical word that's used when making the request. I think we do have to sit down with all of our union, anyone with a collective bargaining agreement to talk about what the impact of any change may be coming down the line. My recommendation would be if we had one MOA for all of our districts, that would be ideal, but of course, it's a decision of each individual board in terms of how you decide you want to handle it. But I think you can do seven separate MOAs, or more than that, because we have more bargaining issues, but we can do a separate one for every union. We can do one for the entire SAU. You can do it either way, it is legal to bargain those changes.
Dr. Campbell, I see Paul with a hand up, and then I see Tim with a hand up. Paul?
Thank you Travis. So a question in my mind is, when we're talking about working conditions, you know, obviously, we have to decide, first of all, do the teachers across the different districts agree about what they want their working conditions to be, because if they don't, then we can't have one memorandum of understanding, right? And the other kind of difficulty here is if each elementary district is going to make its own reopening plan, then can we have the same working conditions across all of our districts? Or are we going to have working conditions that essentially create the floor? For these are the precautions that are going to have to be put in place, because this is what the MAU with all of the teachers' districts requires. So I just wanted to point out some of the complicating factors here, and make sure that we're clear on how we want to proceed, so that we're not, you know, entering to MOU and then running into problems afterwards, you know, kind of have to think all that out before we make this decision as far as if it's one MOU, or if it's going to be different MOUs across all the districts.
Thank you, Paul. Tim?
Yeah, I agree with what Paul said, his comments anticipated some of mine. So I too, I've received correspondence from the local affiliate in Kensington, their desire to negotiate with us locally in Kensington. And I think that working conditions will be fundamentally local. It involves the infrastructure that's local, and also the local preferences of the community and the teachers. But with that said, I think it might be helpful if the SAU might put together some general guidelines or some starting place as a way to just help things get started, and some general parameters, so that then locally the boards and the local union affiliates could work out a mutually agreeable memorandum.
All right, thank you, Tim. Appreciate your thoughts there. Anybody else have any other? Helen, yes, I'm sorry. And then I see Neil as well.
Thanks Travis. I also received a notification today from the Paraprofessional Association for the Co-op with regard to negotiating safety conditions at work, and I responded by letting them know that until we have a clear picture of what's going on, I mean, they were asking for a meeting within the next two weeks, and I am not able to, you know, respond to that without having more information. So I would be more comfortable, as Tim pointed out, by getting some guidance from David and Tom on this, and how we might proceed, and perhaps also have each board, as we talked with regard to the Budget Advisory Committee, decide how they may want to pursue this. I know our board's going to be meeting next week on the 28th. It may be a subject for an agenda item, but, or it may be too much on one evening to discuss with regard to the the plan for opening, so I'm a little more comfortable getting some guidance from David and from Tom, to be honest with you at this point.
Thanks very much Helen, appreciate that. Neil, you had some thoughts or comments as well?
Yeah, just the same, I received a notice just before the meeting started, and I'm just now having a chance to look at it, and it's asking for a reply no later than the 24th. So I guess I would look for guidance too, from the administration about a framework and next step, realizing this is a, you know, this is an exeter school board decision.
All right, thank you Neil. Unless anybody else has any other questions or comments, it's sounding like the general thought of the board is to, at least we want to have discussions at the individual board level first. I think Melissa, to your first comment, to decide kind of what their approach needs to be before we can really engage fully with, you know, the appropriate union representation as well. So I don't know that that's helping you much, Dr. Ryan, in terms of providing direction, but I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts, but it sounds like the boards do want to speak at the local board level first to decide how they want to approach this. Is that a fair assessment?
That's what we gathered from that conversation, so that's actually very helpful, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, did you have another comment you wanted to share?
I did. I apologize upfront, because I think I've misunderstood, so I'm just going to put that out there. And I just want to, I just want to reiterate that I'm speaking on behalf of myself, because I haven't had a chance to speak to the other board members at this point, and they have a 20% vote, just like I do in Brentwood. But what I would like to say, if possible, I would love the idea of David, Tom, or anybody else kind of giving us some idea of a draft plan of what their thoughts are, simply because they have been in touch with the healthcare professionals throughout all of this, so I think that they know what's reasonable, what are reasonable expectations for the classroom. Also, there may be some costs involved. I just feel at this point that they probably have a better handle on things than we do, and then if they could hand, if they could hand down some type of a draft, if they're able to, to the local boards, and then we take it from there, I know I personally would really appreciate that.
Thank you, Melissa. Oh, I'm sorry, Helen, were you saying something?
I was just saying, I agree with Melissa, I think we need some guidance, because as far as I'm concerned, you know, David and Tom are dealing with this every day, and just to get some ideas of how we might proceed and what some guidelines might be would be most helpful.
All right, thank you Helen. Tim?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify that that was the gist of my comments too. I feel strongly that ultimately this is a local decision, but I do, I would like to get some guidance from the SAU, and I, because I agree with Helen that they've been working on this, and also they have a certain amount of expertise in this, so I think that that would be helpful to help us get started off on the right foot at the local level.
Okay, thank you, Tim, appreciate it. So Dr. Ryan, Dr. Campbell, I think that at least gives you some feedback from the Joint Board in terms of what, you know, support we may be looking for here in the short term as we start to have these conversations at the local level. So Dr. Ryan, anything else to that?
I just want to make sure I understand, so to give some some guidance and some, maybe some samples or exemplars. Are, is it permissible for us to begin talking with those associations to see what their their, because they've drafted templates, I suspect. And I just want to make sure that we follow this board's direction and not overstep our authority.
Does anyone have any objection to the SAU having some of those initial conversations with the appropriate NEA representation, just to lay that foundation? Anybody have any objection to that approach? I'm again, looking around for hands here.
I'm fine with it.
Thank you. Jonathan, did I see your hand up as well?
Yeah Travis, I think it's a great idea to engage, because they probably know exactly what the compensation has to be around, and I think that will help individual boards be able to dictate or, you know, form the answers to the questions they may have, because we really don't know what they want at this point.
Yeah, okay, thank you Jonathan, appreciate it. So Dr. Ryan, I think there was not opposition to the SAU starting those initial conversations with the appropriate NEA folks, just so we can get a better understanding of where we're at and what common ground we have and what we need to work on, so.
Excellent. We can respond to each of the association leadership with an email and copy each of the board chairs from each district, if that would be helpful, just to let them know that we'll be at least gathering information and putting together something for the individual boards to review. So you will expect to see a reply to those emails that were sent to you soon.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Thank you everybody for a brief discussion on that. And unless there's anything else the board wants to touch on with that, I think we should get to really the reason that 531 people are watching this meeting, which is to discuss the return to school plan presentation. So we're turning it back over to you, Dr. Ryan.
Thank you very much. I'm going to put into the chat box, and actually, I'm going to switch that to all of the attendees. I'm just putting a link to the presentation of the plan that we're going to be talking about, so attendees at home can click on that link. It should open up the document I'm about to share. I'm going to give people just a second in order to access that. And I suspect everybody can see the plan. Can I get a, Helen, can you see the plan I have on the desktop? Excellent, thank you.
Yes, we can see it.
So thank you very much. As you would imagine, we are very eager to present this plan for Common Expectations to our Joint Board, to our community, make it available to everyone. Everybody should have a copy of this at this point, through the link in the chat. Certainly sharing it with the board on Friday, giving you some ample time to review it. We did share it last evening with our teachers, our staff members, because the last thing we want is for the very people on the front line to get the information about them last. We didn't think that would be very fair, so we wanted to give our staff and faculty an opportunity to review our thinking as well. This plan has evolved from conversations that started back in March, believe it or not. Immediately when we turned to, on March 13th, canceling, or closing our school buildings and pivoting to remote instruction, we immediately started thinking about how long is this going to last? What is it going to look like? So we originally were two weeks, we were two weeks out. And a few days later, the governor issued his order, so we were three weeks out. At the end of the second week of being on remote instruction, we had made a decision that we were going to continue to keep our buildings closed, because based on the information that we had at that time from our community partners, to a FUMARAN with us this evening to provide any kind of background. We felt it was the safest thing for our community at that time. We actually made a phone call to the Commissioner of Education on that morning, and we informed him as a courtesy that we were going to be letting our families know that we were going to keep our school buildings closed. He had asked us to hold off on making that announcement, and that afternoon, the governor would be making a similar announcement relative to continuing his stay-at-home order, or at least keeping schools closed, which he did. So we followed the governor's orders. We continued to think about when we were going to come back, and it dawned on us that we didn't think that the year was actually going to be completed in our schools. And March 26th, we sent a letter home to folks talking about possible end dates. From that time, usually, I think right around the second week of April, the SAU administrative team began discussing what it would look like to return to school in the fall, because there was no guarantee that we were going to be able to do anything during the summer. And what would that look like for students, what would that look like for staff and for families? So we organized toward the end of April and the beginning of May, four specific committees based on four base models of return. On page two of this document, you're going to see that we list all of them. I'll try to fit them all on the screen. Because they all deserve the recognition that they should, should be getting for the amount of time, the amount of thinking, the amount of anxiety that these folks have gone through as employees, as parent representatives, on putting together some type of plan under their respective committee, and then making it available to the public. As you know, this is a very emotional topic for many of our families. The level of anxiety that exists is off the charts. There is so much information that is available to the public through many different channels, some vetted, some not, that it stirred a lot of fear in people on what we're going to be doing if we come back to return, come back to our schools in person, and all of the associated issues that come with that. And so I want to commend the almost 100 people who worked on these four committees, who put themselves out there and took this work on to gather information and organize data, so that we could arrive at a point today where we're able to talk about how we're returning to school. And I just want to make sure that if you see somebody on this list, and you know them, or you want to send them an email or a note of thanks, it would be deeply appreciated. So we can't thank them enough for the amount of work that they put in. The entire month of May and the first two weeks of June. From that group, we asked eight of those folks who are representative of stakeholders to stay with us and meet last Wednesday. And we put a draft of this plan in front of them and asked them to poke holes in it, take some punches at it. And it's important to remember that this work is no one person's work, which really translates to we're not taking any feedback, or input, or criticism personally. It's impossible to take it personally, because this plan is about all of us. This plan is about what we all believe to be the very best way to continue to serve our students in the safest way possible. The very best way that we're going to be able to continue to have our staff serving students in buildings the safest way possible, and to keep all of our families at home, where our students and our staff members go at the end of the day, safe as well. So it comes with the best intent, it comes with a place, the place of a starting point where we can open up the conversation, put it on the table, and begin to talk about what it's going to look like to return to school. And that's essentially what this introduction says here. As Mr. Galitsky pointed out, some local authorities certainly in not only negotiating an MOA based on what the local operations are going to look like, but it would be foolhardy of us to assume that our Joint Board would be able to make a decision on what's the best operating plan for Kensington. It would be foolhardy for us to assume that the same would happen at the high school. There are two very different schools, very different campuses, very different sizes. campuses, very different sizes, infrastructure, services, age levels. There's so much about, so many differences within each of our districts and in Exeter with two of our schools, one being a K to two and one being three to five, which has implications, that it's really important to us that the local school districts, the local school boards, the school administrative teams really work together over the next two to three weeks, not longer, or most likely longer, with support from us at Central Office on developing whatever the local plan is going to look like, how we're going to meet those common expectations from an operational standpoint. From the beginning, we've looked at how we're going to reduce density and restrict mobility as our two probably best weapons to minimize the risk to the health and safety of our students, staff, and families. That means that we're going to incorporate just about all, if not all, of the guidelines for safe re-entry. That includes masks, that includes social distancing, utilization of space. We're blessed in this SAU to have resources that enable us to utilize space that we have available in our schools. Certainly looking at how we can utilize outdoor space, knowing that this is New England, and it does get cold and it rains. But what are some of the options for us to be outside? So when building this, we looked at some of our guiding principles. And I also want to give public thanks to Steve Zadrivick, who's the Superintendent of Schools in Portsmouth. Portsmouth schools are returning, they're returning in person. They provided a document very similar to this, the structure of it, the way it was organized to their board last week, which the board approved. We saw this, we asked Steve if we could use the template and use some of the information that was in it because it applied to our situation. And he was more than gracious to share it with us. So a public thank you to the Portsmouth School Department. But number one, health and safety. We've talked about that. We live by it. That doesn't change whether we're in a pandemic or not. It is a privilege to be in front of our kids. We truly believe that. It means it's our responsibility to keep them safe, no matter what the situation is. We're an SAU that's pretty well known for its safety and security measures. That doesn't change when we're talking about educating students in a health crisis. In terms of in-person learning, it's our intent to have students back in school in September. Again, each school is going to be operating differently in terms of how they're going to be able to do that. Secondary schools and the Cooperative School District will be operating very differently from the elementary schools. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through this plan. But given the feedback that we received through our four committees, the hybrid committee survey and the data that resulted from it from our parent community, as well as our students, was not favorable for a hybrid. There are a couple of issues with that. One, the technology. Our ability to utilize the technology to its fullest capacity, while teachers are also supposed to be teaching in person in classrooms, is unrealistic. It's unsustainable, and it's not healthy for our teaching staff or students. And so we didn't believe that a hybrid model, based on the data that we received from our community members, was a very feasible plan, which is why, based on the health and safety data that we have within this community, the low incidences of infection, the low transmission rate, and more of the data that we've been looking at over the last couple of weeks, we believe that in-person is the best way for our students to be connected again, not only with each other, but also with our adult staff. We also believe it's important for our adult staff to be able to be connected again in a professional learning community where their colleagues are nearby. But again, following those safety guidelines. One thing we'll never stray from is our seven principles of competency-based learning. They're our anchor. We pride ourselves in two specific pillars, one being competency-based learning, the other in social emotional learning. Those go hand in hand when it comes to talking about this plan and how we're planning to bring our students and staff back. Those are seven principles that we've embraced, and we spent some time, a little over a week and a half ago, with 60 of our staff members, conducting some professional development and designing how we're going to deliver professional development to the rest of our teachers and staff on achieving these seven principles, regardless of the way that we're returning to school, even if it means preparing for an interruption and returning to remote instruction. Certainly, the community impacts. Mark Whitney talked about this last Thursday. The community impacts and how we are interdepartment, we're interdependent in SAU 16, as we are in every community in New Hampshire. There's a lot that goes into a successful economy. This isn't about money, because economy isn't always about money. This is about opportunity for all and being successful in our entire community. There's so much that has to go on where we all support each other in what we're doing, that we believe the schools are at the center of that. We tried very hard in the spring to be the center of people's worlds, where there was one constant, and that was school was continuing, even though it looked different. When school, when businesses were closed, when offices were closed, kids were still learning. And so we wanted to be that center, and we wanted to be that rock. And we felt that that had a positive impact, culminating with a high school graduation, that everybody could celebrate, that there was life on the other side, and that we were working our way back. We believe that by returning to schools, that that is going to be paramount, or excuse me, that is going to be so impactful on our community, that we do it in a safe way, and it's going to point in the right direction for everything else that's happening around us. Certainly, we're weighing risks. There are levels of risks that people are willing to live with. That's going to be a very personal decision. We, again, having worked with Dr. Johnson and our colleagues over at Core Physician, as well as Exeter Health Resources, working with the Department of Health and Human Services, the Department of Public Health, James Murray at the Exeter Public Health Office, several folks who work in long-term care facilities, senior citizen assisted living. Many people have been very cautious in putting forth any kind of information about any returning to anything. But as the last six weeks, six to eight weeks have unfolded, in our work with the public health networks, the Seacoast Public Health Network and the Stratford Public Health Network, they're seeing the shift, and they're actually encouraging communities to go forward with mitigating plans for reducing risk, but not to quarantine, getting away from the quarantine, but getting back into life, but taking the necessary precautions to do so. I think we've said this from the start, that everything seems to keep changing. This framework, these plans, they're most likely going to continue to change. I think it's a real easy example when we start talking about masks. One of the hottest topics would be masks on young children, and the effect of masks on young children. And that's going to be a topic of conversation this evening. On Friday, when we sent this information to the joint board, we were relying on data and information up to that point. And over the weekend and today, some new information has emerged, which causes us to, again, take a look at, is this the right way to go? And so, you know, there's some work in here that still needs to be done, based on the information that continues to change. And that's why it's so important that we get something on the table to talk about where we can start. Certainly, teachers' capacity, we've talked to some about that in terms of the hybrid. But, you know, their approach to teaching, their approach to returning to school, that's going to change. That's going to remain something that's in flux. We may, we may get to the end of August and be prepared to have people coming back into our buildings, and we may get the word that, no, based on what's happening around us, we're not going to be able to do that. We have to be ready for that. And so any return to school that we're planning is also going to come with a plan for remote instruction. Everybody that I've spoken with that have asked questions about remote instruction have asked the question, is it going to be more robust? I think our teachers, as much as we've asked them to shut down over the summer and get away from, from school and thinking, I think every one of them has been assessing how they did in remote instruction this past spring and want to do some, some things differently, if they have to. They would much prefer to be in the classroom. But I think everybody is looking at, how can we provide higher levels of quality, not work more, because our teachers did more work than they've ever done in their lives, and they need to be commended for that. But really, it's understanding how we can do things differently that can be more effective for students, because not all students succeeded in remote instruction. We have to be supportive of our teachers in that. And we have to make sure that we understand where they're coming from, because our teachers also have children of their own. And if they don't live in our community, that means their children are being educated by other communities, who may or may not have the same resources or the same planning that we have. And we want to be certainly respectful of that. We want to make sure that our teachers have the fullest capability to teach our SAU 16 students, as well as have their own children educated. And so that's a very complex problem that we continue to work through. And then, of course, looking through a lens of equity, something that we've been saying since we started a few years ago, talking about how we can bring more equity, and when we look at race, when we look at poverty. Not every student has the same capacity as those coming from highly resourced households. Not everyone has the same preparation. For every family that's prepared to continue with remote instruction at home, there's a family out there who doesn't have that capacity, that needs to be able to have their child, whether it's for social reasons, whether it's for their instructional purpose, whether it's for their, their mental wellness, to be around other students in a safe way, to gain some routine again. There's just no easy way to look somebody in the eye and say, well, the majority said this, so I'm sorry if that doesn't meet your needs, but you're, you're out of luck. That's not what a school system does. That's certainly not what SAU 16 does. So working through this plan, whether it be addressing one-on-one needs, whether or not people are able to return to school because of health-related issues or otherwise, I think it's very important for us to keep in mind that not everybody has the same that everybody else has. And I know that's, that's a strange statement to make, but we do have found many families here, new, who are undergoing new economic challenges as well, based on COVID. And we have to continue to pay attention to those, those families, as well as all of our others. So I'm going to stop there, and those are our guiding principles. I'm going to ask if Dr. Johnson wants to add anything, or Mark Whitney wants to add anything. I like putting Mark on the spot, because every Thursday on our calls, he constantly would put me on the spot. So it's my chance now to get back at him. But I think I may be asking Dr. Johnson first if she'd like to comment on anything we've discussed to this point.
I think I've gotten myself off mute. I do think, very well said, you know, this has been something that, within our local community, as well across New England and across the United States, and frankly, across the world, that we're seeing changes that are happening regularly. We don't have the data that we often have with these illnesses. This is an emerging illness that has even changed as it's moved across the world. And so that has really led to changing data, merging data. And Dr. Ryan is probably very sick of getting emails and text messages from me, as we're looking as much as we can at the different angles for which we're seeing this data presented, whether that's through the medical communities, whether that's through the education world, and trying to put those things together. We really continue to merge and change our practices within, our outpatient practices within Core, where I work, through the hospital. You continue to see that. But it certainly is a challenge getting back to doing some of the things we haven't done for months at a time. I can't imagine that any discussion and decisions made today are going to stand in six or eight weeks, just knowing that we continue to see new things daily. And so I think that having a framework to start to talk about, but recognizing that, again, that first day of school, things may have changed. We are in a very fortunate position in the United States right now, here in New Hampshire, particularly on the seacoast, to have our levels be low and stable and low. Right now, our infection rate is less than one. So that transmission from one person to another, rather than one person getting it and spreading it to more than one other person, so an expanding case rate, we've fallen below one, and we've been there for a little over a month now. Our positive test rate is below 2%, which is fantastic. And we are having quite a bit of testing comparison where we've had before, as well as contact tracing. And so that really gives us an opportunity to have a conversation here on the seacoast and in SAU 16, that a lot of other communities can't have. And it's really a tribute to how hard all of us have worked to do the things we need to do to limit that spread. So thank you to all 500 and more of you who hopefully have been working hard to keep this in control, so that we can even be here to have that conversation.
Thanks, Dr. Johnson. Mark, would you care to share at this time, or?
Sure, I would. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. I just want, first of all, I just want to thank Dr. Johnson for all of her participation in this process. I'm not only a member of the leadership of Exeter Health Resources, but I also have two children currently in SAU 16, a rising senior and a rising sophomore in high school. And I want to say, I want to thank her involvement. I also want to thank Dr. Ryan for his leadership through this process. The school system, and I'd actually reach out and thank the rest of the school board members, the staff and the school system, et cetera. When this, when COVID-19 hit, when we started to go through the changes that we had to, from a healthcare system, the school system was right there with us as a community partner going through that process. And as Dr. Ryan talked about, we've been working together on a regular basis through the, through the rollout of COVID-19, through its building intensity, anticipating some of the threats that we thought we were going to see, and then now through some of the steps in terms of recovery. And I certainly want to say that Dr. Ryan and the school system as a whole has been a tremendous partner in that. I also want to say that I think, from our perspective, and I think I can speak for Dr. Johnson in this as well, the process that the school system has been going through is an extraordinarily deliberate, inclusive, detailed, fact-based process, in terms of looking at the different options, considering the risks. As a parent, I'm very, I'm very comfortable with the conclusions that they've reached. But also, as a healthcare administrator and leader within the local healthcare system, I'm very impressed in terms of the level of engagement. And that, that was true, not only in terms of this reopening plan, but even in terms of the work that they did to support a safe, working graduation for all of the seniors that graduated this year, which was really quite remarkable. So again, I think this is an extraordinarily well-thought-out plan. I think that it's gotten the input of the professionals that need to be involved in it, is taking into consideration the facts on the ground, as Dr. Johnson just talked about. And it's a very, very thoroughly thought-out plan. So I appreciate having the opportunity to be there. And again, can't tell you how much we appreciate as healthcare professionals, the support of this, of the school system, and the professionals in the school system in supporting us as we faced the end of a crisis.
Thank you, Mark. I really appreciate that. We all do. You know, it's very-
Dr. Ryan, I just wanted to take one second if it's okay.
Go ahead, Dr. Johnson.
... myself. I just realized that while you and I have spent a lot of time talking, I'm not sure if everybody knows who I am. So just a brief introduction. I'm a local pediatrician here in the Exeter community. I've been here for about 12 years. I've been a pediatrician for about 20 years. I certainly don't presume to be an epidemiologist, and I don't have a master's in public health. But like Mark, I'm a parent of two elementary school students, and my husband is a teacher at the high school. So lots of different invested interests, but obviously here primarily to help from my pediatric expertise.
Thanks very much, Dr. Johnson. So, so working with, you know, Mark, Dr. Johnson, and many others, we didn't, we did not construct this plan lightly. Deliberate, I appreciate that word, because it's precisely what we do. We wanted to be very deliberate in how we crafted it. And again, it's not even close to being anything finished. Anything that is decided upon today is not final. This is not a final plan. So this is more about making sure that the community is involved in the planning for how we're going to return to school. Today really is to share the information that we have based on not only our science research that we've been reading up on, but certainly our public health and our medical research, six pages of which you'll find at the end of this plan, but also the countless people who have given us input and feedback, that being moms, dads, other school administrators, school teachers, paraprofessionals. It's been so helpful to receive that feedback, to give us some things to think about that perhaps none of us did think about while we were putting this together. So this remains very much a community document that we'll all, we hope, take pride in at the time when we're able to be back in school at the end of August, beginning of September. So I just- So I just wanted to make sure I reiterated that. I don't think we're going to say fluid document enough tonight, as well as the word draft, that this is a draft, a working draft. I think you're bringing to page four, which is our conditions of return. This essentially just outlines four specific conditions and the resulting indicators in what school would look like. Condition one naturally would be when we are under a governor's stay-at-home order. That is not out of the realm of possibility. The line that we've been sharing is we are not going to guarantee that there is going to be a public or an interruption with a stay-at-home order, but we are going to guarantee that we're going to be prepared for it in the event that it happens. So the work that our teachers did a couple of weeks ago and the work they'll continue to do in refining their instruction, how we're approaching remote instruction in the event that we have to move into it, is certainly going to be, they'll be more prepared. They won't need to be told on a Friday, hey, Monday, we're going remote, so get yourselves together. Condition two, you can see, is low-density, partial remote. That's where things are still not as settled as we'd like, where we're not seeing a decline. I did, I noticed that New Hampshire and Maine are the two states in the United States that currently are still experiencing a decline in the number of cases. And so the data that was shared with us just by Mark, Mr. Whitney, and Dr. Johnson is very helpful to bring us into a condition three, where we would be the envy, or we would be the, are the envy of places like Arizona, Florida, California, Texas, even New York. We are in a position now where we are low enough, where we feel comfortable that by using the appropriate measures, which are in this middle section here, would be all of the layers that are, or most of the layers that we would impose in order for us to be able to return to school. You're going to see here that face masks slash shields required by all students in grades six to 12 indoors, masks optional for students in grades K to five. So we're going to put an asterisk next to that. Dr. Johnson and I had a conversation today about how we're, we're still keeping that open for discussion. We're going to continue to review data that comes, comes in either through the medical field or through our public health partners, and we're going to continue to review that. We know that there were some stories that came out in the press over the weekend, but sometimes the press can be very misleading and can have angles that they want to take in order to get their point across. We would prefer to work off of the empirical knowledge or the empirical studies that come through peer-reviewed journals, as well as research that's conducted in the field from our science and medical partners. So we're going to continue to talk about that. I know that is a very hot topic for parents, and it should be. I know it is for our staff members, and it should be. So it is not a done deal, and it's something that we're going to continue to review and discuss throughout the rest of the summer. In terms of our teachers in K to five, that's something that will also continue to be discovered, but shields, as long as they go, if I'm not mistaken, behind the ear and below the chin, give me a nod, Kristen, if that's correct. That's great. Thank you. So that students can see the teachers' faces. There's so much that has to be done from a mental wellness and social-emotional perspective with our students and our staff, that we're going to try and make this as humane as possible so that we're not dressed up in full PPE, like body suits with full-face masks, and try and be as practical as we can, as safe as we can, while also addressing the social-emotional needs of our students and staff. And then certainly screening hygiene, disinfecting protocols. You can see on the right side over here, we talk about how some of that's going to happen. Again, that reduction of density, restriction of mobility. We're looking to, we're recommending a five-day student week, where we have our K to five students in class utilizing the space and teams working on, at each of the school, each of the schools, teams working on how we're able to utilize the space to the best of our ability. But grades six through 12, students attending school either in the morning or afternoon session, so condensing to a very compact core delivery of instruction. So students on an A day, half of our students at the high school and the middle school would attend in the morning, and the other half would attend in the afternoon. And then on a B day, it would flip for equity purposes. We would talk about how we could make sure that those students that don't want to sleep in every day don't have to, or those students that want to sleep in every day have. But in the other half of the day, students would be working on the learning that they had been either assigned or had experienced during the course of the day. So a student who would be attending a PM session would be preparing in the morning to attend class in the afternoon. There would be limited student interaction, certainly. We would be working, and I know Mr. Monahan and Ms. Wands are working with staff members in terms of the scheduling, and we'll be expanding that work to make sure that operationally at the secondary schools, that it's a very viable plan. The key to both of those plans of going back to a five-day student week is that in the elementary school, we'll be doing meal service in classrooms. So our food service department has done an amazing job on developing a plan to address nutritional needs for breakfast and lunch in classrooms. So it eliminates the mass gathering in the auto-cafe gymnasiums or in the cafeterias or the other common spaces where students would gather to eat. At the secondary level, we will be eliminating lunch at the school, at this middle school and the high school instead, because students will be on their half-days, we'll be continuing our food distribution, weekly food distribution, much like we're doing now and have been since March, where students and families would pick up their meals for the week and not have to utilize any of those large common spaces. And this helps out in a number of different ways. It certainly reduces density in our cafeterias. And as you know, at CMS, they're working on totally dismantling and rebuilding that cafeteria and moving that kitchen and building it outdoors. So it gives us the opportunity, particularly at the high school, to use that large space for even further density reduction. And then certainly utilizing that outside, outside space as well. And there's a remote option that is going to be afforded to, to our parents, which we'll cover on page five, which is our condition three remote option. We'll talk a little bit more about that. And then condition four, naturally, that's what we want to get to. That's where everybody has heard about the 21 pharmaceutical companies that are working on the vaccines. Some say they're going to have them ready in September. Some say they're going to happen in January. That's where I want to issue caution to everyone who's paying attention to this. We really have to be careful on where we're getting our news because they're going to be able to share any information that they want. And that's, that's what I'm fearful of. That's what has a lot of our anxiety up. And we want to get to condition four. We want a full return with no restrictions. We're not going to change how we're going to determine when that happens. We're going to rely on our data from science and our medical partners. There's just no other way around it. It's what helped us when we started reviewing what we were going to be doing back in February as COVID was making its way to us, and we're not going to change how we're going to be doing that now. So with that, I'm going to ask Esther Asbell, our associate superintendent, to work through this page here, page five. And then we're also going to have Assistant Superintendent Chris Andruski address some childcare issues that he's, he's had the pleasure of discussing as well. So Esther, if you would.
Double checking, can everyone hear me? Just a nod, maybe Mark Whitney, because I hear on my screen, if you can hear me. Okay, thanks. So the conditions for remote learning, a couple of options here. If schools open in that condition three that Dr. Ryan just went over and reviewed, and your child is unable to return due to some COVID-related medical health risk, then we will expect, the expectation is each school will work with the family, they'll work with the student to provide an education, in all likelihood, through some kind of remote instruction. That's a little bit different than parents who are maybe uncomfortable sending their students back to school. You can still choose to not have your children attend. However, we will have to look at standalone options, platforms such as something like V-LAC, because it's just-
Excuse me, Esther?
-unreasonable and-
Hey, Esther.
-expectation would be too high for our staff to be teaching in school.
Esther, this is Travis. Excuse me for one second.
My name, sorry.
No, Esther, this is Travis.
Hard time hearing, makes that better?
Yep.
Yeah, that's much better. Yeah, a lot of folks are having trouble hearing you. So thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
All right. Should I start again?
Yes.
Yeah, probably.
Sorry about that. I will, I thought I would be talking too loud, but this is good. Yes?
Yes, that's much, much better.
So back to the top of the page, the condition three remote options. If schools open in the condition three, obviously there will be some children that will be unable to return due to COVID-related medical health concerns and issues. What that means is that the schools will work individually with the students and the families to access some type of learning through remote instruction. Clearly, that's going to have to be individualized based on those medical conditions, and we've done this before. We've always had this kind of option for students that might have some kind of medical reason they can't attend. So we're very confident that we can continue to align to those seven principles of CBE that Dr. Ryan spoke of earlier and provide a strong education for students that can't return due to some kind of medical health risk. The other piece of that is parents who maybe are uncomfortable, which is a little bit different than able to have their students come back to school. What we're going to have to do is ask children, those children, to attend a standalone platform, maybe something as such as V-LAC. V-LAC has opened up and has going to be offering a K through 12 curriculum this fall. So that could apply for elementary all the way, middle and high school students. The reason we are offering that standalone option only for those parents who may be uncomfortable sending their kids back is just the demand on our teachers if they're teaching in school, and then to expect them to teach remotely, that's unsustainable for our teachers. And we have to, again, really account for our entire population, which is obviously our staff are a huge piece of this plan. So trying to meet those needs as well as student needs, those are the options we have for remote learning. If you do choose as a parent or a family to do that remote option because you are uncomfortable returning to school, you do have to stay with that choice until the end of the first academic semester. And again, that same reason stands true is that it would be very difficult for students to flex in and out from a V-LAC format perhaps, or an online platform format, back to school. We want to be as flexible as possible for all families, but it would just be almost impossible to move those students in and out of a remote learning from a separate platform back into the school building. We are going to send out a survey of intent, be looking for that, families tomorrow. And those questions will all relate to whether you're planning on sending your child back to school, has some transportation questions, and we're hoping that you can get that tomorrow, fill it out, and submit that survey back to us by July 30th. As the sooner we can get that data, then we can begin to work with those plans within these common expectations at the more local level. Moving on to the PPE, we will provide as schools the cleaning supplies, the hand sanitizer. We are asking that parents do provide a mask for their child or children before each school day. If, clearly, if a child doesn't have one, we will provide a disposable mask for that day. We're just finding that many, many students we see out and about are wearing masks, and so we anticipate that families have purchased masks that maybe the children are more comfortable with, that they are excited about wearing. I've seen everything from Spider-Man masks to, you know, logo masks for older kids, et cetera. So there are some options there that might encourage our kids to keep their masks on if they're excited about the mask they have versus a disposable mask, which clearly is not at all equitable to a Spider-Man mask. So that's our plan for the PPE right now. And then we are recommending a new student start date. The new student start date would be Wednesday, September 9th. And that's really due to the significant need for us, to provide all of our staff some time for additional staff training and professional development. As Dr. Ryan mentioned, we had spent the last, I think, two weeks ago now, three days trying to plan professional development, and we got the feedback loud and clear from those teachers and administrators attending that, that they really needed additional time at the beginning of the year to feel well-prepared, ready to go, and to be the very best that they could be when students walk through those doors, as well as planning for those remote pieces, as we do anticipate that that could come down just as easily as not by the time we open school. So really want our staff to feel like they've had some time to decompress. There are some empathy pieces in that training. And then do some really good planning for your students and children. I think that's the whole page.
Great. Thanks so much, Esther.
I was, sorry, Dr. Ryan.
Yep.
I was just gonna, I know that part of the concern here about maybe starting a little bit later was also related to childcare, maybe for parents. So we did have Chris, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Andruski, Assistant Superintendent, as I know he's been commuting with local partners around childcare, and I think he has some information to share.
Sure. Good evening, Esther. Can everyone hear me? Dr. Johnson, I see you. Great, perfect. I did have the opportunity to speak with two healthcare professional, childcare centers today. And again, it really echoes what Dr. Johnson, Dr. Ryan, and Mr. Whitney said about community partners. When I talked to both Caitlin Dennis from Great A Kids Company and also Kim Myers from our local, yes, speak up.
Yeah, exactly.
Also, when I spoke to Kim Myers at the local YMCA and talked about how could we work together, knowing that we had put out a start date of August return for students, but knowing we need the professional development, could they work with us to provide childcare for those students before and after school, but also, you know, in a camp-type format for those extra days that we'd be recommending for professional development? And both Caitlin and Kim were more than willing and had already been thinking about solutions of how they could support all of our towns in SAU 16, knowing that parents have to get back to work, knowing that there would not be a spot for, for kids to go. Some of the biggest obstacles that they've had is that they've had some other guidelines that they've had to go through that came from the state. And Caitlin talked about right now, they're, from their infant to their 11-year-old program, they're at one teacher and nine students in a, in their facility because it's smaller than a classroom. They'd be able to operate in a much bigger capacity if they worked out of our buildings for that time period. One other thing that she talked about is that they are not wearing masks for their kids who are infants to grade 11, to age 11, excuse me. And they, over the last nine weeks that they've had kids, they've had no incidents or transmitted cases. So that was promising to hear from Caitlin. Talking with Kim, you know, they already do camp-type formats when our kids are on vacation or were on vacation as of last year. So we talked a good 20 minutes about how quickly they'd be able to evolve. And again, it just came down to staffing in both of those locations and how they could support us with the staffing that they currently have or expanded out based on the numbers. So we were set up to talk to a couple more facilities tomorrow, and we'll continue throughout the week, but then look to have a greater call next week with all of these different childcare facilities and on something common that we'd be able to put out for the whole community, whether it might include a survey of parents that would be interested or would need that specific childcare, either for that, you know, extra six days that we'd be doing professional development, or now they're in a situation where they'd need before-or-after-school care. So those plans are in the works, and I was really happy to hear that, you know, both Caitlin and Kim had already been thinking about it in anticipation of our meeting tonight. So I think, you know, together, again, that community partnership not only will help us through the, through the health and medical and through our academics, but in the childcare realm as well. So that's, that's where we are initially, and again, be working through with a couple more facilities in all of our towns to talk, to start the conversations with them as well.
Great. Thank you, Chris. So as, I just wanted to double back to Wednesday, September 9th, as a day to, to start school with our students. September 8th, as you know, is a primary. And so some of our schools are used for as primary polling places. That would be why the additional day to just eliminate the need for, for whatever the process is going to be for, for voting and not have it intermingling with our students and our staff, which is a request there. So Travis, there's, that's an action item that the joint board will need to take up after our presentation. Just noted, that would be certainly a vote that would be needed by the joint board. And when we're through the presentation, however you'd like to facilitate that, I just wanted to make sure it was on your list of things to cover, either as part of or before or after the question-answer period with the board members.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I do have that down as a note that that's one item we will have to take action on here. So I have that noted. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. On page six, you'll find ongoing detail planning and preparation. Basically, this is the meat and potatoes of what we will now do. This is where the details come out. These are six specific areas that are going to require our attention. This is where each of our schools and our school boards will need to do some of the m- more specific planning. When you're looking at facilities, naturally, the size of New Fields Elementary School or East Kingston Elementary School is very different from CMS or Stratum for that matter, or Lincoln Street. So, so really being very school-specific on each of these items. We did ask a good time ago, I think three or four weeks ago, our Director of Student Services to work with our school nurses on developing their needs for PPE. We've asked them to inventory their specialized PPE needs. They are working on an isolation protocol for each of the schools so that in the event that there be a need to isolate and/or quarantine or somehow work with a student or staff member who demonstrates or displays symptoms at school, how we're going to work through that, that work continues. Transportation and food service, we've discussed food service, but as far as transportation is concerned, that's where that parent survey that we're sending home tomorrow, the inventory is going to be very, very helpful. One of the ways that we're able to reduce density would be to ask parents who can provide personal transportation for their children to and from school instead of using a bus to do so. Number one, it certainly reduces the number of students who will be on that school bus. Based on the information that we have, we can seat one student per seat with a mask. That means it's 20, I believe, 26 students on a bus. Typically, there are three times that many for elementary school bus runs. And in working with Tricia Daley, our Transportation Coordinator, she's calculating costs working with the bus company on how we would be able to manage that. By understanding a rough number of students who would be able to be transported to school in another fashion, who typically would ride the bus, is very helpful in that planning. It would give us the opportunity to reallocate buses from one district to another in the event that we don't need to use buses in certain districts based on the number of students who are riding. So that survey is going to be critical. In terms of plan for restricted mobility, we are talking about all of the ideas that people have been presenting to us, having the adults move and the students stay put, one-way hallways, restricted restroom use, or, you know, obviously, we've addressed the no common areas. Arrival and dismissal procedures. At East Kingston Elementary School or Kensington Elementary School, it's going to look very different than it will at Lincoln Street. And so we may end up at Lincoln Street, at Main Street, at Strato Memorial, perhaps even at Swayze, talk about some staggered drop-off times and what is that going to look like. And that's going to be different from each school. So that work is going to be ongoing. And naturally, the communication, the intent survey on student attendance, the responsibilities for safety protocols, training on safety requirements, all of those things we're going to continue to communicate to our families, to our staff members, certainly with our boards, because each of our boards will be briefed pretty frequently by our school administrative teams. And then again, as an SAU, providing all of that support through the communication process, engaging in a communication strategy that is pretty well-organized and purposeful and making sure that everybody has the right information responding to questions. And that starts with our listening sessions that are going to be taking place over the next couple of weeks. That will give our parent community and our staff members an opportunity to have their specific questions asked, and if they can be answered at that time, they will be answered specific to the school and the question of that person. So that's all part of the communication plan that will continue through the rest of this month as well as the month of August. So that concludes the planned presentation of common expectations. In the chat box, I am going to add the frequently asked questions that we generated as well because I don't believe we made those available. And you may find one of your questions on there that's already being answered. So I'm going to do that. In the meantime, I'm going to stop sharing the screen. I'm going to turn it back over to Travis to facilitate the motion on changing the academic calendar for the start date for students and then for questions from board members.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I appreciate it. If it's okay with you and with the board, I think I will flip the order of those. I think we should have the discussion about everything first before we talk about voting on the change date. I think most of us, I see some heads nodding, would like to have the discussion, and then we'll, we'll address the vote on the start date of the calendar. So I've got my chat box up here as well. I think the easiest way to do this and to facilitate things, obviously, you raised hand, I'll try my best to see that, but if you just want to throw in the chat box that you have questions, you don't need to write them all down, but at least to give me a heads up, I'll try to keep monitoring that as well. I know Mr. Bauer has some comments and questions he wanted to address, and I see Maggie has a hand up as well. So Paul, first to you.
Thank you very much, Travis. So let me start by saying I want our kids to return to school. Our kids want to return to school, at least mostly. I know mine do. But we can only do it with proper precautions. And what I mean by that is we have to maximize the likelihood of safety. I think that this fluid document, as David aptly called it, had a real good start of doing that with the middle school and the high school proposal with the AB days and the mandatory masks. I have some very serious concerns about the proposal for the elementary schools. And I want to explain a bit why. There's still so much we don't know about this virus. While some studies certainly are asserting that it's less likely to spread amongst younger students, their effect on these younger kids is less of the virus. They largely also include the caveat that this is based on a time period when our schools have been closed, and largely, our younger kids have been in quarantine. I mean, we, they've been the most protected class to this point. So I don't think we can say with any degree of certainty what's going to happen when we get all our kids back together in a room. And we have to be mindful of that, and I think that means we have to maximize precautions here. We don't know how it's going to affect kids. We don't know how it's going to affect our communities, how it's going to affect community spread. Also, we have to be very mindful of our staff that we're putting into these rooms. Even if we take forgiven, which I certainly don't, and I don't think we can with any degree of certainty, that it's not affecting kids, that it will not affect kids. We do know what affects adults. And these adults mean very much to us. They're the people we rely upon to educate our kids. We have to be mindful of how this affects them too. In my view, we have to err on the side of caution, maximizing safety. Kids can't learn if they don't feel safe. Teachers can't be expected to do their jobs as professionals if they don't feel safe. I think that what we're proposing for the middle school and the high school with the AB days, you know, some type of hybrid is something that we ought to be considering for elementary schools as well. Also, educating in an outdoor setting is something that obviously we can't do year-round being in New England. It's something we could do for the next few months largely, and I think we need to really focus on using that to the extent possible. We need to take a look at, you know, when we look at other models of, other places where they've opened schools, the places where it's been done with the highest degree of success have been Finland and Denmark. And these are things they've done. They didn't just take whole, whole groups of kids and stick them in the classrooms. They went with some kind of hybrid models, dividing the kids up into smaller groups, using outdoor education. On the subject of masks, and I feel very strongly about this, masks must be required. We, we all know masks are designed, they work to protect those around us. They're not for the wear. They protect those around us. What does that mean? That means we're only as safe as the least cautious person we're putting in a room. And obviously, if masks are made optional, people who are less concerned about the virus may be less cautious in their community are the ones that are not going to be sending their children wearing masks. And that puts everyone else at greater risk despite the fact that they've been cautious up to this point and continue to be cautious. You know, to the concerns about, you know, kids having difficulty wearing masks, younger kids having a hard time with it, we're schools. It's our business to educate kids. All kids can be taught to wear masks properly. My kids are able to do it. I have full confidence that other kids can learn how to do it. That's what we do. We teach kids. We can teach kids that too. I know that there's some academic inconveniences with masks. We're going to have to deal with those for the time being until we're confident that we don't need them. You know, medical safety, the health of our kids, making sure the kids feel safe in the classroom has to be paramount, especially at the elementary level. Look, we all know kids, kids are not great at covering their mouths when they cough and sneeze, right? I've worked real hard to teach my kids to do it. They're still not perfect. We know kids aren't great at it. We also know kids aren't great at social distancing on their own, keeping separation. If they have those masks on, that's a barrier that's there to protect them in the inevitability when they don't cover their mouths, when they don't stay away from each other. We need that there for the protection of the kids. Another key point I'll make is, all of us adults, how are we having this meeting? We're on Zoom right now, sitting in the comfort of our own homes because we don't feel like it's safe for us all to gather in a room. I think we need to be mindful of that as we're talking about putting all of our kids together in a room. Yes, we do. We absolutely do. I'm not willing to cross my fingers and hope for the best on this, you know, and I'm speaking as a board member, I'm speaking as a parent. We need to maximize protections so that our kids can learn. That's what we're in the business of doing, is providing a safe environment in which our kids can learn. And I think we really need to take that seriously. The last piece I'll mention is the survey of intent, this plan to go around. Obviously, I haven't seen what this survey looks like, but I can certainly say that I think it's going to be difficult to fill out, given that we don't know what each of the specific schools is going to do, going to look like. For example, if my kid's elementary school is going to have no mask requirement and have all the kids together in a classroom and not have social distancing, I can't send them back because that puts them directly in harm's way. If we're going to have a mask requirement and have some provision for social distancing, then I absolutely will send them back because that's what I want to do. That's what they want. So I hope that the survey is going to have some kind of flexibility there where we can say yes if, no if, to give guidance, because I can't give a clear yes or no when I don't know what my kid's school is going to look like yet.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate your thoughts on all that, and hopefully, everybody does have the chat function open. There were a number of board members that chimed in there as well with, you know, agreeing with all the sentiments there, so just make sure everybody sees what the comments are. I see that Maggie has questions and then also that Cheryl does. So Maggie?
Thanks, Travis. I'm not going to reiterate anything that Paul said because I don't, I don't disagree with anything Paul said, so I'll just leave that there. I had two questions. I'm not even sure if we can ask a question, Travis, but I'm going to ask it. In the option three with the junior high and the high school going mornings and then, morning or afternoon, does that impact anything for teachers? Like, would that make their days longer? Because I'm assuming they don't have that option. So I'm just curious about that. And then my other question is, and this is something Paul did allude to, I'm concerned about where the teachers fall on this. I mean, there was conversation in the presentation about if parents don't feel safe sending their kids to school, but what happens if we have teachers who don't feel safe for many reasons? Where does that factor in? That's just the comments I had.
Thank you, Maggie. Dr. Ryan, did you want to touch on her questions now, or how do you want to manage that?
Oh, no, I'm happy, I'm happy to do that. We do have some teachers who are with us that were part of our group that reviewed the plan, and they're welcome to, to offer a response as well in terms of how they're feeling. But in regards to the, was it your first question, Maggie, about the option and what that impact, what that does to impact teachers?
Yes.
Because, that was, okay. That's all part of working out the MOA with our teachers' union. We certainly looked at the number of class periods per week that they would be teaching. We looked at the minutes. The high school and the middle school principals and their administrative teams are working on a schedule that meets the current working conditions in terms of their terms, because we can't exceed those terms, and that's something that the schedule is being developed around. I think a lot of that work is going to have to happen during the development of the MOA. I think that's where we're going to be able to get to a final determination on what it means then for our, our working conditions. So while we, from where we sit, we don't believe that it impacts the number of minutes, days, or contact periods during the week. The union may have a very different opinion of that, and I look forward to having that conversation with them so we can both reach a mutual accord on how we're going to be able to, to move forward. One thing I can say is that we have a very positive working relationship with the EEA and the Cooperative, and I know that they are eager to get to the table and talk about what that's going to look like for them as well. So I can't answer your question definitively. I didn't know if Amy Gendrow wanted to speak. She's a science teacher, teaches physics at the high school, or Melissa Toby, who teaches at the middle school, if you wanted to provide any kind of comment.
I am concerned about the exposure to the same amount of students that I would normally have. The viral dead-end theory is for the younger kids, but I teach seniors, so they're 17 and 18. They're essentially adults. That is a concern. Mandating the masks and enforcing the masks is going to be, you know, probably the most important thing.
Thank you.
But, I mean, I'll definitely change how I am living my life right now. I see my parents who are older, I won't be seeing them.
Yeah, Amy, I appreciate it. And thank you, Dr. Ryan, for that. I know that Cheryl had some questions, and then also out here, Tom and Neil as well. But so Cheryl?
Thank you, Travis. I have a comment and then two questions. So my comment is, thank you so much for including an option for parents who are not ready to send their kids back to school yet in the form of V-LACs. That it's, and V-LAC is something that is used by kids today in our, in the state of New Hampshire, also in our school district. It's familiar for the school, for children who have used it, obviously. And I, when I saw the proposal last Friday, I was really pleased that that was right there up front as an option. I'll make another comment, actually. I personally would be more comfortable if all kids who could wear a mask did wear a mask. I encourage my kids to wear a mask all the time. I understand there are some children that just plain can't, or they will, or that they will, you know, touch and fuss, but if we could err on the side of encouraging children to wear masks to school, the younger ones, I would feel more comfortable. Now, my two questions. Your first, the survey that's going out tomorrow, is that binding or is that, and is that child identified? So you'd be putting in your kid's name, and he's, my kid's in this grade, and this is what I want to do with my child? Or is it just, what's your opinion? Type of survey.
Chris, do you want to address that?
Dr. Ryan, I think that one's for you.
Sure, I can answer that one. The survey will be school-specific, so we'll know where the responses are based on children at each school. The only thing that we ask for is in regards to transportation, we ask for a physical address. That would be the only identifier for a family so that we would understand who does require transportation to and from school so that we could accurately plan out our bus routes and also remain social distancing on the buses. So that's the only identifier that is, that is key, is on location for transportation.
Okay. My second question has to do with buses, actually. Do we know what these, or will be stated in the, in the survey, what the times are for the A periods, the B periods, so that parents can really look at their schedule and figure out, yes, I'm available to pick up and drop off on those days at that time?
We do have a schedule that's, that's being acted on, but again, that's more at the local level. Right now, we would not see a change in our elementary bus times based on routes. It would be more the middle school and high school would have those morning and afternoon runs. So again, by the identifiers, then we'd know exactly where kids are going to be split up, but the, the actual schedule will be built right at the building levers for both middle school and high school.
So for example, I, one kid in middle school, one kid in high school is a parent. I won't know what time the morning session starts, what time the morning session ends, and, you know, PM similarly. So I can't look at my calendar and say, yes, I can do that.
Not for tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Cheryl. I appreciate it. Tom?
Sorry, had to unmute there. So my question is, and I do appreciate the guidelines, but let's say, for example, Paul's in my district, and we get a slew of parents who are like, I am not into this idea at all. I'm assuming as a school board, we have the ability to make it work. make it work for our community, correct?
The local control and the local authority still rests with you. That's my recommendations.
Gotcha. Perfect.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that. And I'm just going down the list here that I think everybody can see. But Neil, a couple of comments and questions?
Yep. Thanks, Travis. First, I want to thank Dr. Ryan and his team. I think this is just excellent work and very hard and done extremely well. So thank you. I wanted to add my voice to those who would advocate for the use of masks as requirements in elementary school. And we'd note that in Massachusetts' initial guidelines or guidance for reopening, it was grades two and up that they required it, and K and one, they encouraged it. So that's just food for thought. And the question I have is, if, what is the availability and the process, the thought process for testing and contact tracing? But I believe New Hampshire is more fortunate and that we have more availability of testing. For our district, has that been discussed or vetted in any way? Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask Dr. Johnson if she could address that. We did have a conversation today about surveillance testing. And if she could share some of that with the board, I'd appreciate it.
So that's something that we've worked on. I think the surveillance testing is a really great idea and something that we're seeing happening across a variety of locations, whether that's hospitals. We're seeing that in our acute care facilities for our elderly as well. And certainly makes sense that in a higher risk situation that we look for that as well. I reached out initially to Dr. Ben Chan, who's the head of Public Health here in New Hampshire. And that was not something that he felt that the state was prepared to do. The opposite of that sounds like it has come out of Department of Health and Human Services. They are, have made some statements that imply that they're interested in doing that, potentially doing that for schools. And so I've sent out an email to get in touch with them to see if that's something that we could consider doing and looking at some of that basic surveillance information. I think it'd be incredibly helpful as we move forward, knowing what that information is. But it's really going to be a matter of figuring out who's going to support that, how we can do that. Again, does the state want to take that on? Or is that something that should come from our staff health type folks that provide that at the district level? So we're working on it. And I think it's an important question, an important piece to this. It's just a matter of figuring out how we can make that happen. We do, right now, seem to have more available, availability for testing than we've had in the past. Certainly not the level that we would ideally like, but certainly more fortunate than many places in the country. And seems like something that would be reasonable for us to try to do.
Would you mind if I asked that the difference between surveillance testing and contact? Is there a difference or?
Sure. So surveillance testing would be to look at, say, 10% of your population and testing that group every two weeks. So that, for example, is what's being done currently in our nursing home facilities in New Hampshire. All employees, 10% of those, through a lottery system, are tested. And that is something that, in similar fashion, being extrapolated within the core physicians, extra health resources, extra hospital group. That is just looking to say, who, how many asymptomatic people do we have in our community? And being able to both pull them out, but also to look at that level, to see is that level rising? That level is rising of asymptomatics, we are going to have to think about how that impacts the decisions that we're making. Contact tracing is different. So that's that person who is positive and who have they been in touch with? And how did that person become positive? Who may become positive as a result of contact with them and where that goes? So two different issues. The contact tracing is certainly something that's done at the state level. And again, we're fortunate that that has really been increasing in comparison to, with capacity, in comparison to some other places. But that wouldn't necessarily be something done specifically by the district, but certainly surveillance testing would be something that you could consider doing.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We certainly appreciate your guidance and insights through all this. So thank you for that. And thank you, Neil. Jamie, you had some questions as well?
Yes. Good evening and thank you, Dr. Ryan and all. Question number one, I have five. Should we move to September 10th? Because the state does recommend to wait up to 24 hours before we clean or disinfect to allow the respiratory droplets. This is from page 16 of their guidelines. And I would say that the voting, we should treat people like there is a confirmed case amongst our population and not risk the lives of our cleaning and custodial staff. So that's my first, first thing, move to September 10th? Second, with buses, can we have district-specific buses? Or can we potentially work, or are we, are we in the same line of thinking that we were in last September where we have to share buses, where our school day is determined on those buses? So that's just another one to ask. Number three, is there a way to make our district or our facilities peanut-free or allergen-free, especially in the elementary levels when we are eating in those classrooms? I know there are some people that have tactile allergens to specific things like nuts. Is there a requirement to be out the whole semester, trimester, whatever that is? Is that a legal option for us as a school board? Or as a school district, if someone moves in in the middle of the year, we still have to educate them? Can we tell people, no, you cannot be in class because you chose one of the options? So that's my, that's my fourth one. And then my fifth one is a larger pedagogical, philosophical, based on Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And it says, you know, that we demonstrate that these basic needs must be met before children are being able to be focusing on learning. And number two is safety. I just want to put that one out there. So I'll write those down to you, Dr. Ryan, too, just so we have them in our running list of things. But just wanted food for thought for other board members as well.
Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate that. And yeah, I was wondering if Dr. Ryan was going to be able to catch all those right now. So thanks for writing those down and sending those, those his way. I'm sure he appreciates that. And thanks for sharing the comments so that we can all think about the same things. We appreciate it. Jenny, you had a question as well?
Yes. Hi, thank you. Dr. Ryan, you mentioned receiving new info on masks this weekend. Can you elaborate on what that was?
Sure. It wasn't necessarily that I received a research report, but I'm going to put Dr. Johnson on the spot a little to maybe recap our conversation today, if you're comfortable with that, Dr. Johnson.
Sure. So, you know, I think what we have is some ongoing data collection. And when we look at our data, we have to look at where that's coming from. And Paul, you spoke earlier to the fact that, you know, here in the United States particularly, most of our kids have been spending a lot of time not in big group settings. So we have to really look at that, that data carefully. Some of the conversations that we had today specifically related to a study coming out of South Korea, looking at their student population, when they did their study, rather than looking at 12 to 19, they extended that to 10 to 19. And so that, again, is a little bit different than what some of the data we're seeing here in the US. And so seeing that those kids 10 to 19 have similar transmission rates to adults does change that cutoff point of variation there in terms of potential spread risk. Also, looking at some of the data, Massachusetts came out with some data today about the efficacy of masks, looking at their healthcare system and following their healthcare policies, and showing that masks, both a non-N95 mask as well as the N95 mask, have been very effective. So seeing that efficacy has been very helpful and able to expand that to looking here at the local level. What has been that spread from patient to healthcare provider, healthcare provider to patient, and back and forth within the healthcare center? We can say that, you know, here in the Exeter community, that number's been zero, which is amazing. And while some of that is a short period of time, say, if you come to see me for a well-child visit, you're going to be in physical contact in less than six feet potential spacing with me for certainly less than two hours, I hope. But in the healthcare setting, in where you are working with a nurse one-on-one, who's there for, you know, many, many hours, an eight to 12-hour shift, they're having lots of interaction, lots of close interaction, and potentially, you know, I would argue, potentially a higher exposure than you're having with your students, hopefully. So as, you know, we look at those things, that's that data that continues to change. We look at the data that we see from healthcare centers, sorry, childcare centers, taking care of the children who needed supervision in New York, when those were certainly kids that are at high risk for exposure, their parents are essential workers. And again, in that younger group, really helpful data. We've got some data, as Mr. Andruski shared earlier, about some of our local childcare providers saying, hey, if we're not wearing masks, what is that transmission? So we continue to see this data evolve. And again, those were a couple of points that just changed even in the last three days. And I would anticipate over the next six to eight weeks that we'll see a lot more data. And we'll want to carefully look at that. Is 10 the cutoff? Is 12 the cutoff? Where does that go? And how does that jive with the educational needs of younger kids, not just touching their faces, but learning from facial expression, learning speech and language and reading from mouth movement? And I certainly am no educator, thankfully, as my fourth grader who had me try to teach fractions. That's not my role. But definitely trying to complement that with the knowledge that we have about how kids learn. And so that's the data that we're trying to look at, that again, will continue to evolve for sure over the next weeks and months.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Appreciate it. Jenny, was that your only question? Okay. Thank you very much. Allison?
Well, Dr. Johnson just answered a lot of my questions. But I guess, based on all the information she just stated about masks, I think it sort of was leading into my comment that I guess, listening to everybody who has been talking and sort of getting feedback from people who can't talk on here that are listening in, you know, I just, I guess my question is, you know, when I look at the ongoing detail planning that's left the school boards, masks are not on that list. And so, you know, for our, for up to discussion or decision-making. And so I guess I would request that if, you know, or the question is, can we make a decision at a local school that we want to enforce masks? I guess would be the question. And then in general, I just, you know, everybody that I talk to, and certainly my seven-year-olds and my 10-year-old, would rather go back to as normal a school as possible with a mask on, if that's what it took. And I think that we're hearing that from, from other people. And I know that I've had some, some comments from people listening in that are a bit devastated about the six through 12 plan and would much, you know, rather see, you know, full, full, you know, mask usage and more freedom. And, and, you know, everything that I've read, you know, was just what Dr. Johnson has just said, that the transmission when people are using masks appropriately is really low to, you know, next to nothing, at least in our community. So I guess I would encourage the most normalcy as possible with a mask if we can move that way across our district.
Thank you, Allison. Appreciate that. Thanks for sharing your thoughts. Jennifer Rents, the next one I see on the list. If I'm skipping anybody, please just let me know.
Yeah, thank you. I just had a couple of questions kind of related to each other. In regards to the middle school and high school, could someone provide some more insight into why the decision for the, for the recommendation was made to have the A group and the B group on the same days? And is that what was determined was to be best for health and safety? You know, how would it work with sanitizing between those groups, doing the buses, all of that? Versus, I know I've heard in other districts around the country where they're doing different models, like the A group comes on Monday and Tuesday, and the Wednesday is a cleaning day and planning day, and then the other group comes Thursday and Friday, or every other week scenario. So I was curious about the thinking behind that and if that was really what we felt like was best for health and safety. And then kind of related to that, and maybe this is, this will help answer it, is there talk of using some other buildings within the district, for example, like tech learning center, or moving kids around different places to spread them out versus having them going to the same classrooms, like the A students going to the classroom in the morning and then the B in the same in the
So I can address that, Jen. That's, that's a great question. Following that model of reduction of density and restriction of mobility, we, we looked at, number one, we believe that all of our secondary students, all of our students in general, but since we're addressing this towards our secondary students, all of our secondary students need to be in school every day. And in order for us to achieve a reduction in density whereby the largest class enrollment at the high school, or the middle school for that matter, is 24 students. At the middle school, it's probably more like 18, 18 to 20 students. So in taking those large, those large bodies, those adolescents who we know take up more space, and they all will be masked. I don't know if that was missed, but all of our six through 12 students will be masked all day. But splitting the class enrollments in half by, by bringing half in the morning and half in the afternoon certainly gives us that opportunity. Instead of Ms. Gendrow teaching to 24 physics students, she would be teaching to 10 to 12 at one time in her classroom, who would be in masks. It also means that students who come in the morning on an A day would attend periods one, three, five, and seven. And then in the afternoon, the B group would attend one, three, five, and seven. And then on, then on the B day, two, four, five, and six, where five becomes an advisory. Those are the initial thoughts coming from the high school administration. They're working on that type of schedule. But that was the thinking behind why we would look to split into two half-days or two half-sections each day, was the reduction of density, but providing that everyday opportunity for kids to attend school.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Appreciate that. Jennifer, did that address everything for you?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Melissa?
Sorry, I was unmuted again. I just, I wanted to take a little bit of a different standpoint. I'll start with elementary. I do think it applies to high school as well, but I'll start with elementary. So me personally, I feel very strongly that to wear a mask should be a personal choice between a parent and a child. That being said, you know, my children didn't go anywhere for three months during that shutdown. And if I were to enter a store, I wear a mask and I wear gloves. I social distance. I'm very careful, but I do believe in personal choice. My feeling is that we need to, that we need to lead and we need to set an example for our children. I think we need to be data-driven. I think our decisions cannot be based upon fear, but again, they need to be based on the data and the statistics. And I just want to point out, how many deaths do we really have that are in that young population? We don't. We are not seeing that. Back in March, when we shut down the country, we were told that we were going to shut down for 15 days to flatten the curve. We did that in New Hampshire. The reality is, we are not going to eradicate this virus anytime soon, even if we have a vaccine. Let's just say, best case, we have a vaccine by January. What happens when we have tens of thousands of people that refuse to take that vaccine? And they say, I don't want to have that vaccine in my system. I know for me personally, when I'm thinking of an elementary school child with a mask, I worry honestly that it's less sanitary because I just see the kiddos, you know, dropping the mask on the floor, wiping it across the floor, wiping their nose with it, touching and picking at it. My biggest concern is that it would be less sanitary, to be honest with you. My other concern is, I want to do, I want to do what it takes to make our staff feel comfortable, most definitely. But I know, you know, that I've heard people say that it's hard for my children to learn sometimes, even when the teacher is speaking directly to the class. How on earth are they going to understand and get that geometry problem or whatever when they're listening to someone who is talking behind a mask? My last thing, and that's a question, and if you've already addressed it, I'm sorry. But when we talk about having cohorts, cohorts, for example, especially at the elementary level in a classroom, do we have an idea for if a student were to test positive, or a teacher were to test positive, again, based upon the statistics? a teacher were to test positive, again, based upon the statistics they have found, based on what I have read and seen, that the children aren't likely to spread from child to child or child to adult? If, for example, someone were to come down with it, are we going to quarantine that entire class for 14 days? And/or what if a family member gets it? Have we thought that far? Where do we have to shut down that class for 14 days? Because I'm afraid that's kind of an unending cycle. So I'd like to throw that out there too, please.
Melissa, Dr. Ryan, do you have any thoughts on that or any?
I do. Thank you for, and Dr. Johnson's smiling because she knows I'm going to point and pivot to her to respond to this. Again, another conversation that she and Esther Asbell had had relative to this question, I think on Friday. So Dr. Johnson, would you mind?
Sure. So this is definitely a moving target. And we, we see this just as much as, you know, with, with isolation as we do with all of the rest of this. So within hours of this information coming out from Dr. Ryan and the staff at the superintendent's office, we saw a change in the CDC and their recommendation for coming back into the community. Typically, that had been 10, 10 days from the initial symptoms and had been 72 hours from your last symptom, that that changed to 24 hours on Friday. So that is going to be a continuing change that I think we'll see from both our federal leadership, as well as our state and local leadership in terms of what we do with those students that are positive, with teachers that are positive, and who within that classroom setting. Some of that certainly will depend on the details of this, exactly what that socially distancing situation looks like. That's going to look at risk factors based on age, what kind of class that is, you know, certainly thinking about a class where there is, you know, if there was to be singing, for example, you know that there's more projection in that setting. So lots of different factors that are going to go into that. And so when Esther and I spoke on Friday, we decided to hold off and wait to see where that got, those guidelines shift because they're going to be very clear and directive. And again, changing very clearly over the next six to eight weeks. And so jumping to something today would, or today on Friday, would have only made us look silly since just two hours later, they had changed those federal guidelines. So we'll have to continue to follow that. Certainly something will be in place for the beginning of school. And if we don't have direct guidance from our state, federal, or local leaders, we will work as part of the medical community in the school to come up with something that certainly makes sense. But again, right now, we don't have that in place because it's changing as rapidly as it is.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, Melissa. Anything else? Melissa, are you all set?
I'm all set. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you. And I don't know if people are seeing the chat box. There are a lot of folks lined up, so I am trying to see everybody, just trying to go down in order here. Bob, you had a question about bus monitors being on buses in addition to the drivers. Bob, did you want to touch on that at all? Bob, you're still muted. I don't know if you're trying to share some thoughts there.
Yes, I think, I think I'm on right now. Can you hear me? Yes, actually, the transportation looks like a real, real huge problem. 23 on a bus, that's, that's a very small number. I could see lots of buses needed. Along with that is I would think that the sales would apply for mask wearing would be required on the bus also from the time they leave their homes till they get to school and back. Along with that, to make sure that the students sit appropriately, I don't think that should be the bus driver's job. I would think that somehow the school's going to have to help with that also. So are we going to have, have to hire bus monitors? That's my question.
Thank you, Bob. Dr. Ryan, they all keep going to you. So unless you want me to delegate somewhere else, let me know.
That's all right. That's what we've asked for. We've asked for the feedback and these kinds of questions. That's going to be on our list. And when we're talking with each of the schools, as well as with our transportation coordinators, how we're going to manage that on each bus. You know, we're not, we're not 100% sure, but I bow to the wisdom of our boards in making room in their budgets this year by using unassigned fund balance last year. And I speak of last fiscal year to enable us in the event that we need to utilize resources to do things like bus monitors. And so that's definitely on the list of items to discuss in our detailed planning.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Appreciate that. Thank you, Bob. And Thad, I believe you were up next.
Yes. Just first of all, kudos to everybody who worked on the committee's phenomenal work. Secondly, when I, when I look at all this information, one of my thoughts immediately goes to the idea of some children who have medical conditions and can't wear masks or people who are struggling in some way. Obviously, public shaming is a huge issue in our society today. And having six kids of my own, I see this displayed time and time again in our communities. So I guess my question would be, have we given thought, and maybe this is more of a late August type of an idea, about forming a committee or something to really work with the emotional health around the idea of public shaming and bringing it in school so that we can really be prepared and have children prepared emotionally for what's coming? Because I think, I think a lot of students are going to go in directions that we don't want them to. It's just the nature of children in our world for all time.
Thank you, Thad. Breaking up a little bit there, but I think we got the general concept of your question. Dr. Ryan, any thoughts?
I just want to make sure I understand it. Are we looking at the social emotional wellness or mental wellness of students as they return to school? Is that, is that the question, Thad? I just want to make sure I capture it.
Yeah. Thad, I think we're losing your connection somehow. I can't quite hear you. But assuming that that was the question, what we're looking at to, you know, prepare for the social emotional, you know, needs of our students going into next year?
Sure. This is where I think I can turn towards Esther and ask her to talk about the trauma skill training that we're looking at, as well as the empathy work that we're doing when, when not only students, but staff members return to school.
Sure. I think I heard a couple of things, Thad, in your question. One was overall the social emotional wellness. And clearly, we've put some things in place already, expanding those supports with universal screening for all our K through five students in adding grade six and grade nine to trying to just assess where kids are at as they're returning. And then employing our multi-tiered system of supports that our schools do have in place to really work with students that maybe were to use analogy of green, yellow, and red, and that everyone would understand if they were green, maybe, maybe now they're coming in red because they've had a different experience and they haven't had the socialization, et cetera. And they're in a different place than when we had them in the building before. So some universal things are in place, as well as more specific training to the pandemic, meaning that the research that we've looked at and that we've done some training already with our staff is around resiliency and building that. First, in our staff, they had that training, I want to say in May. I don't quote me on that. I think it was May, the end of May, yes, as I recall it is, was. And we have a second part to do, again, hoping that we get those days, the beginning of the year. We would follow up with that training and do the second part, which is really how to build resiliency in your students on whole. And then most recently, we had our trauma skills, which is a little bit different than our trauma-informed school communities. Our trauma skilled work was really focused on very specific skills that our administrators could use with staff, and then staff could use with students, really engaging the five senses to de-escalate worries and anxieties. Some very simple techniques, but really allowing all of our teachers to get trained at that. So we have a tier-one support from all of our teachers, not a selected group of student supports. So really focused on that and trying to address those needs right up front. I think, Thad, maybe the other part of your question was more around shaming and blaming, if I heard you correctly.
You did. I'm back on another device. Sorry.
Is that right? Not if I'm on the?
Yes, I'm sorry. My computer keeps going Commodore 64 on me and it's really bad. So I'm on, I'm on my iPad. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead, Esther.
So I understood, as you were talking, a question around shaming and blaming for students when they maybe don't return or can't return, or maybe you return and then they get sick and there's a reaction to that from the community?
Or if they have a health issue and they can't wear masks. You know, if they, if they have a health issue or even an emotional issue and the doctor feels like, you know, because some kids would feel claustrophobic and they may not be able to, and those may be the students that need to, the parents may need to help them make another choice. But just being very aware of the way, you know, students can talk to each other, treat each other, public shame each other so quick, and, you know, pointing the fingers saying, you've got coronavirus. These are all realities that are going to happen on some level, I would imagine.
Right. So we've really worked to go back to that trauma skills training and the empathy and work through those empathy interviews. And again, our administration and the people that attended that workshop a few weeks ago, we actually led them through the activity. Our administrators are planning to run that same, a similar activity with their staff and faculty so that they can in turn do that with our students. That's really the first step in doing that. As you know, all of our schools also have processes where they have curriculums built in to deal with teaching skills around empathy, forgiveness. Some use choose love, some are using open circles, some are using restorative justice. But in particular, all of our elementary schools have been doing that for at least since I've been here. And most recently, in the last, I think it's two years now, a full-fledged restorative justice program at Lincoln Street, which was a move, a shift from their responsive classroom. Stratum uses choose love. I've encouraged us today in a conversation with Patty Wands to really have a team look at that curriculum, as well as Mike Monahan, for some use with, through advisories and as enrichment blocks. I know when Dr. Ryan talked about the period five that would repeat each day, that's really for use around interventions and advisory and those kinds of issues you speak to, Thad.
Thank you, Esther.
Thank you, Esther. Thank you, Thad. Appreciate that. Going down here, Helen, I believe you had some questions or comments as well?
Thank you very much, Travis. I want to preface my comments, first of all, by thanking everyone who was part of this plan. I know how difficult it's been. I know that you have been taking into consideration all variables here. And I cannot thank you enough for all the hard work that has gone into it. I'm going to preface my remarks with regard to safety issues by, I'm going to personalize a little bit, if I may. On May 13th, we received a phone call that my brother-in-law had passed away in New Jersey of COVID. An hour later, my husband's cousin passed away of COVID. Our family was hit twice within an hour. I never want to see another family go through what we have been through in the last few months. I have some serious concerns, and I understand all of the surveys and all of the data that's coming out, but I have some serious concerns with regard to elementary school students not wearing masks. For obvious reasons for me, I am concerned about the possibility of their passing something on to their older siblings, who will then pass it on possibly, God forbid, to kids at the middle and high school. I'm concerned for the teachers who are going to be working with these youngsters. I feel that initially, and I may be in the minority here, but I feel that initially, we should at least attempt to have those youngsters wear masks. We can always lessen the restriction later on if we find that things are improving, but you cannot go back. If, God forbid, there's a resurgence or if this is spread among our children and then on to their parents and grandparents, you cannot take that back later on. So I am just recommending that, whether it be the individual boards, the SAU administration, that you consider all of those factors before any final decisions are made relative to that. My question that I have is of a different nature, and it's directed more for Dr. Campbell. It was brought to my attention by a former colleague of mine who has been subbing in other, in other area, district, that she has notified them that she will not be subbing this year until a vaccine is available, which I totally respect. Have we or will we be surveying people on our sub list? Because I have a hunch we're going to be needing substitute teachers a fair amount this year. Are we surveying them to find out what we have in the way of personnel for that particular need? Thank you.
Helen, we have not yet surveyed our substitutes and nor have we surveyed our teachers, but both will be going out to all of those individuals so that we can try to collect as much data and information as possible around staff who can return, staff who can't return, staff who need other accommodations. So that's all part of the process that's evolving. And the survey, I think, is going to be very helpful in helping us to understand what is that landscape going to look like for staffing.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Appreciate that. Thank you, Helen. Scott, you had some questions and comments pertaining to SST looks like?
Yeah. Hopefully you guys can hear me. Just in all of the documentation, which has been great, and I can't say enough about, looks like the time and consideration that's been taken by everyone to go through, through this plan, to come up with some guidelines. I think it's a great starting point. But I didn't see anything in relation to SST and how that would work in regards to the AMB Day and dealing with other towns and all that kind of stuff. And obviously, we're, we're trying to, you know, minimize exposure. And now we're, we're dealing with obviously other towns that are not in our SAU and bringing those kids into SST. So I was just wondering if there's, I'm sure there's been talk around SST because it's an integral part of our SAU, but I didn't know if maybe someone could speak a little bit about what the plans are for SST.
Scott, I'm happy to talk about that. In terms of the specific operational logistics at SST that's ongoing, Sharon Wilson and her team are continuing to, to talk through that. The advantage of the schedule at the high school is it doesn't disrupt the SST schedule for Exeter High School students. However, there are five other districts in our region that send their students to SST. And you bring up a good point, the health and safety precautions being taken in other districts and then those students coming to SST with our students. That's a part of a wide conversation in the Southeast Superintendent's region, or the Southeast Region of Superintendents, where we talk with our colleagues from the surrounding SAUs on coordinating in some regard how we are going to ensure that our students at SST, number one, have an equal opportunity to continue to attend, but two, make sure that if we move to a remote instruction platform at some point, that they're afforded, and in our other schools, the same opportunities for SST remote instruction as our Exeter High School students were afforded. It was a very difficult spring for SST students from our sending districts because their schedules were very different than ours. So what we've tried to do is coordinate remote instruction with them to get that piece out of the way, to which we've received some lukewarm responses, some positive responses. And so we'll continue to work on that. We meet now, I believe it's every other week as a Superintendent's Association. As far as working with Sharon Wilson, she was pleased to hear that, you know, they're certainly at the center of a lot of our scheduling and our safety precautions. But what it looks like in our labs and what that looks like practically is going to be some of the similar work we do in our other schools. So it's hard for me to definitively state what our precautions are going to be relative to our sending districts, but I want to assure you that there's not just a conversation with this team, but certainly a wider conversation with the five superintendents who send their children or their students to us. And we meet this Friday, as a matter of fact, as a governing board to talk about some of that. But there's also a widespread discussion in the Seacoast region with all of the other school districts up and down the coast and in a bit inland about how we're trying to work together. We share our plans. We share our ideas. This plan is going to be shared with the Southeast Region, just like Portsmouth shared theirs. I know SAU 21 will be sharing theirs. Rochester has shared theirs. And so that's going to be continuing. So I just wanted to assure you that that, while is not a concluding or conclusive conversation, is very much part of our planning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. And Scott, thanks for asking that question. That was one that I certainly had on my list as well. So thank you. Moving along, Amy, you had questions or comments? Moving along, Amy, you had questions or comments?
Yeah, first of all, Helen, I'm very sorry for what your family had to go through. That's awful. Thank you for sharing that. I do, I totally love the fact that this is a fluid plan and it can't be anything but that because the high school definitely has to look at things differently than an elementary school. And we're going to be seeing our students half as often for half as much time. So the benefit of starting school later is, is huge for us. We have to really be creative in how we deliver our curriculum and how we can get the remote learning component for when students aren't with us to be working for us. The one thing that I hope we can also address in some kind of concrete way is school security. And we've really had the benefit of the last five months with no school violence and with students in the high school walking around with masks, doors being propped. That's a concern that several students that I've, and several teachers that I've spoken with, as well as myself, we do have that concern. So hopefully piggybacking on this, I know obviously this is a health issue, but I don't want the school security to sort of get forgotten about.
Thank you, Amy, for sharing your thoughts and it's a great comment, so appreciate you sharing that with us. Sarah Gallagher, you had some questions as well? Hi, Sarah.
Hi, thank you. So my question really has to do with options for parents that are not comfortable. And given the fact that right now potentially we're choosing for our younger kids, our K-5 students, to not be wearing masks or have them optional, I'm going to assume that many parents are going to be uncomfortable and will be looking for an alternative. My question is, can we, as an SAU, be more supportive in providing resources for those parents? And I know that Patty Saret from Exeter also wrote this in in the chat box, but her thinking really aligns with what I'm also thinking too, perhaps a parent portal or opportunities to connect families, thinking about resources for families that are not yet ready to send their kids back. I feel like that it's just not as robust as I would like it to be. That's it.
Thank you, Sarah. Dr. Ryan, any thoughts or comments there?
I just appreciate Sarah's comments and all the questions that we're getting. You know, this is obviously a really hard one to, to work with. Having a plan in place that could be changing tomorrow, could be changing tonight and just not knowing, you know, as a parent of, of students in high school as well, without knowing anything about what my son's going to be doing in the fall or what my wife's going to be doing at her school in the fall because we live in a different district, I get it, I understand and I'm empathetic to all of our parents who are really uncertain of what's going to happen in the fall. One of the benefits that we have is we have a lot of really smart people who live in this community who are contributing to understanding the issue at hand and coming up with really unique ways to make sure that we're addressing the needs of all of our parents in the community. I can't say that we're going to be able to address every single parent's issue in a way that they would like, but I can promise that we've never stopped being a resource for our parents and we're not going to stop now. I thought we provided a pretty, to use the word robust, resources page on our website that listed several different categories for parents to, who were involved in either mental health, social emotional health, learning options, tutoring, tech issues, and we'll continue to do that. That's not something that we're going to walk away from, it's actually something we lean into. So while the information that we share in our plan this evening may be cold and crass that if, you know, you're not coming to school, too bad for you, that's absolutely not the intent, that wasn't how we meant it. Because we survive and we thrive based on the spirit and the positivity in our community and we're going to continue to try and maintain that because we feel that that's our role.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. And Sarah, thank you for the questions and comments there. Continuing down the list here, Mr. O'Day, you had some questions. Patrick?
I had a couple of quick comments and I have a question for Helen Res too. Thought maybe she's going to get off the hook and not have to speak tonight, but I'm going to make sure she gets an opportunity. So first of all, I wanted to just say quickly, I think it'd be very helpful, these plans that we're sharing with other folks across the Seacoast and across the state, if there's a way to gather that information and share it with boards as we're looking at that, that could be very useful to see different models that are out there. So I put that thought out there. The second thing I want to say is just, Helen, I know how you feel. I also lost a family member in Massachusetts and I have a good friend of mine who was one of the first people diagnosed in New Hampshire and she was quote unquote recovered. She got a certificate from the state that says she has immunity, but she still only has 70% of her lung capacity and is probably going to lose a kidney. So I'm concerned about some of the long-term health effects of this disease that we don't really understand yet and I don't pretend, I'm not an epidemiologist, I don't pretend to understand it really, but it's, I haven't heard this focus tonight and I'm happy about that. Sometimes in the national media, I hear focused on mortality, either you recover or you die and there's nothing else in between. And there's a lot more that's in between that we should be focused on as well. That brings me just to my last point and this goes back to Helen. The, one of the guiding principles that looks at equity, when I think of equity, I do think about our special needs kids and particularly because they're, sometimes they're medically fragile, sometimes they're not, but I think remote learning for them is incredibly difficult. And I'm hopeful that this plan is going to be well-suited for that, those group of students. I wonder if you can say something about that, Helen?
Well, one of the topics that we discussed while making this plan was in particular the students who probably missed the most during remote learning. That would be students that have more developmental disabilities, that their disabilities are more global. And we talked for the middle school and high school to have those kids come every day, all day, because their transportation is separate usually and we could socially distance them on their transportation and get them to the building every day for the full day. So, you know, currently, as soon as our, a plan is more solidified, we will, I will be gathering with the special ed administrators in each of the buildings and working with them on, you know, how are we actually going to plan to make that happen? You know, at the elementary school with the kids coming every day, that was good in my mind for our students. But again, we are, you know, we're concerned about all the kids. We're concerned about kids with medical issues. We want to know how we can spread them out more. Stratum's looking at a space in their building that they can convert to more individual workspaces. That's currently just a large oversized closet. It's got windows in it and it's really perfect space to make more workspace because that's, that's what we have to be looking for. How can we spread people out who need a lot of individual work?
Thank you, Helen. Appreciate that. Thank you, Patrick. Carla, you had some questions as well about ventilation in the buildings, it looks like?
Yes, thank you. So I'm just, I'm trying to get all the information here and one of the, one of the topics that came up in the Dr. Sutcliffe Guide in this pack from Cleveland, Hampshire, was the importance of ventilation and properly working HVAC systems. And it also discusses like looking into new, you know, better air exchangers and internally with these buildings and, I mean, our, New Fields is one of those buildings that was built in, so I think something. So I'm wondering what, if anything, has been done to look at the ventilation in these spaces because from what we know, if we're stuck in rooms with no moving air, isn't that going to increase the risk potential for these students and faculty?
Dr. Ryan, somebody from your team care to taffle that one? The empty chair is probably not going to do it for us.
Let's let Rusty do it.
We're going to give Rusty a shot.
There we go.
It's Rusty Lester. Let me turn the speaker off, I'm controlling.
Rusty, you're one of the real close to the microphone, so we can hear you.
Our gentleman, Dan Westmoreland, and we're surveying and looking at each school. I can't say how, how New Fields is. I know we have looked into Lincoln Street, Main Street, CMS High School, and we're doing some work at Swayze. I have not heard, again, I know New Fields is old, but I do not know what the air exchanger looks like over there. I could certainly get into that, it's an ongoing process. And we're certainly looking into all of the aspects, how we can improve it and do it fast.
Thanks, Rusty. Appreciate it. Carla, did that answer your question or give you a starting point for that?
Yeah, I guess, and then is there a bigger risk? Like a lot, one of the reasons we're being so successful right now is because we're reducing contact, obviously, and we're outside a lot. So I guess just one of my big concerns is if we are in spaces that are not well-ventilated, I know singing was brought up, you know, chorus is the concern. Is there any data that shows those settings with less moving air has a higher risk? And what are the risks if we know we're putting all of these bodies into spaces that don't have moving air?
Okay, so we had a brief discussion about that. There are two, two thoughts about that and again, it's all new, so we're looking into all the different possibilities. One was that running the HVAC system and moving the air about could be more detrimental to health than not running it at all, where moving air about. That doesn't seem likely. We are talking about upgrading our filtering system. We're currently, currently using what's called a MERV 8. We're looking in, as of today, we actually looked into bumping those up to what's called a MERV 13. It would require the filtering, which we currently change quarterly, would be changed on a monthly basis. So we're seeing how that would benefit. There is UV protection, that's very expensive. We haven't looked into that. That would take a sizable amount of time to provide, so we certainly couldn't do it before the beginning of this year. So we are looking at all the different possibilities as well as disinfecting each classroom each day.
Thank you, Rusty. Appreciate that. Thank you, Carla. Jane had some questions as well?
Hi, yeah, thank you. I have a comment and two different questions. Let me start off saying that I have two children. One of them is going to be at the elementary level and one is going to be going into CMS. And thank you, Helen, for commenting on masks. My going into third grader is very comfortable wearing a mask. We've spent all summer working on this and it can be easily taught. There absolutely might be some issues as we go into the new school year with some children and some, some things that, some hurdles that we need to go over, but I think that one of the biggest things that we can do is make sure that our children are masked. You know, a lot of caregivers that are in our community are, could be elderly and they could be very well exposing, you know, people that are high-risk just by going into those classrooms. So I just want to mention that. The first question I had though is the, the policy and procedure on testing and self-reporting. When someone is either diagnosed with COVID or if they self-report with COVID, you know, who's going to be doing this testing? When is it going to be happening? Are we going to be testing our students on a regular basis or not? As well as our staff, you know, are we going to be recommending that our, you know, staff gets tested or are we going to leave that on the onus of our community itself? And then the next question I have is somewhat related, which is when a vaccine is available and it could be available within the school year, what is going to be the school's policy or are we thinking about that for a standard requirement of a vaccine? Or we're going to require that a certain percentage of our students, if they are okay getting a vaccine, get it? Are we thinking about this as we're putting our plans forward into the school year? I mean, it looks like we have a couple of different companies that are, you know, moving forward with vaccines. It could be a possibility. So I wanted to see what type of information we have out there and the thoughts on it.
Thank you, Jane. Dr. Ryan, you just want me to pitch it to Dr. Johnson right out of the gate and eliminate the middleman?
Oh, I might have something to say.
All right. Over to you, Dr. Ryan.
I can say that, and Dr. Johnson's going to correct me if I'm wrong, that it's actually recommended that families do their screening and take temps at their own home. And we're going to rely on families to screen as well as do some of the basic symptom screening in the morning, but also if, you know, if, if a child or an adult doesn't feel well, do not come to school. I know that sounds very simple, but it's also going to require us to do some training. And naturally, if somebody is exhibiting symptoms, we would anticipate them being tested. We've talked a little bit about surveillance, surveillance testing, but as far as mandating that students and staff on campus are being tested, that's, that's not something that we are anticipating doing. So Dr. Johnson, if you wanted to expand on that?
I'll try to remember all those questions. So I think, yeah, we did talk about surveillance again after some conversations, most recently, I think looking at surveillance of our staff rather than our students, but certainly students that are going home with symptoms or not coming to school because of symptoms, having testing is going to be an important part of that. And I think that is in general what we're seeing in our community based on what our healthcare teams are doing. The, if those are positive, that tracking happens through the Department of Health, so that would continue to happen that way. And, you know, how that happens within a school system, certainly we haven't put that to the test yet because we haven't been able to test and have positive results since any school has been open in place here in New Hampshire. So a little bit of that remains to be seen for how the state plans to handle that. We, in terms of, let's see, we talked about surveillance, I feel like there's another part that I was supposed to answer here.
So I'd asked about, you know, how the students and staff can get tested, so you've kind of recommended that, but then also that vaccination piece of it as well?
Oh, yes, thank you. Thanks for reminding me. So I think the vaccination thing is going to be very difficult to anticipate ahead of time. And depending on the effectiveness of that vaccine, the availability of that vaccine and who's going to be able to receive it, we may find that when that vaccine is rolled out, it's rolled out to select high-risk folks. It may be only available to the elderly, it may be only available to essential workers, it may not be available to our general population. If that is a vaccine that has a very low efficacy, that certainly is going to look different than one that has a very, an excellent efficacy. So there's so much to learn from whether we're even going to be able to get a vaccine and then what that vaccine looks like in terms of safety and efficacy before any of those decisions, I think, can be made, but certainly things that we'll want to keep in consideration as we move forward. But again, I, very hard to assess at this point since we're so, continue to be in those phase two and phase three trials that don't really allow us to have a ton of information on where we're going and again, rolling out within the US and worldwide, are really not clear how that's going to happen. I think you also spoke to sort of comfort with mask wearing. There are a few resources out there, specifically from our psychotherapy group, our community that do CBT or cognitive behavioral therapy, working on how do you help kids get used to and be comfortable wearing masks. And that's certainly something that I can pass on to Dr. Ryan and the group to put in that resource so that as we have kids who are struggling like that, that we have some rules and some recommendations to put in place to say, hey, this is how you do this. If your kid rips it off right away, what do you do and how do you make that a process that gets your kid ready for school if, if that's our expectation? So we certainly have some of those resources. I agree, I see kids, see two-year-olds in my office who can wear a mask for half an hour, it's amazing. But I also see older kids who are really struggling, so we're definitely going to have to do a lot of education on that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Jane. Sarah Edwards had the question as well?
Yes, I have three different questions. The first one is a, sort of goes along with Jane's question as well, and it's about notification for families if they're in a classroom where a child or a student or the teacher tests positive. I know there are some state mandates when kids get sick where the school has to send a note. a notification home to parents. And for me, as a child of, who, I have a medically fragile child, you know, this kind of information and if I'll be informed and if it's regulated is really critical. And I know it is for a lot of other families making the decision.
Thank you, Sarah. Dr. Ryan?
I saw Dr. Johnson getting ready to answer that. I didn't want to interrupt her.
That's so kind of you. I think, you know, it's a challenge. And I think that's where, again, I know I keep saying that, it's, I'm sure it's really frustrating for folks, but again, it's going to vary on a number of things. How long are you in contact? How close are you? And what does this dynamic look like? If you're in a classroom of 12 kids or 24 kids all day and you're moving within that classroom, that is going to be a very different setting than, say, a class, an expectation, excuse me, guys, I really need some privacy. Sorry. I swear they're good at wearing masks, but just not interrupting. So I think that as we, oh my gosh, I totally lost my track.
You were talking about whether a student was in a class with 12 students.
Oh, yes.
Positive. Or if it was a different scenario.
Right. So you may have a different scenario. Thank you so much. Sorry, my kids are a little distracting. So what you may find is in a high school scenario, you're in a different situation than you would be in a, an elementary school classroom where that group of 12 or more kids are in the same class all day. That exposure is going to be different than a kid who is in a high school class potentially for 45 minutes with a group. So that amount of contact, that amount of movement and what that class dynamic looks like may change that. And so we're going to have to watch to see both what the individual schools have for plans, as well as where we're looking at how one defines that close contact. And that will be, I think, that recommendation that I will offer back to the district about how we, and how we address those conditions and who's notified and how. You know, obviously, it's not going to go to the entire school if there's somebody there specifically, but again, trying to figure out how do we, how do we balance that? Sorry, I know it was kind of vague.
No, I appreciate it. I recognize there's privacy issues, but there's also safety or concerns.
Absolutely.
And for people to be notified so that we have the opportunity to make the choice for our own family about whether our child would return to school or stay home or a certain period of time.
In the past, for example, with pertussis, which was a big hot topic a couple of years ago when that was going around, again, we really looked to the public health department to help identify who was at risk and help us to facilitate that notification. So my assumption would we probably go back to that, but again, the health department has not been very clear, certainly within schools, about what those rules would be. But I would assume that that would, and Dr. Ryan's nodding his head, help to guide us is looking at our public health department for that tracing aspect.
Thank you. My second question was just to confirm about the survey that's going out to parents to gather information and that at that time it is not binding for a family to make a decision about a return to school for a child for September to December. That that is helpful information that might guide decisions for school boards and the SAU, but it's not binding.
You are correct, Sarah.
Okay, thanks.
You're correct. It's not binding. There's no way we would ever be able to ask our families to commit on July 20th for what they're going to be doing on August 31st if we, as a school, can't even commit to what we're going to be doing on August 31st. So it's to give us some planning, some opportunity to do some planning, and using some of the information that we can gather is best to our ability. We all have to remain flexible.
Great. I appreciate that because I think it's helpful to the boards to be able to have their listening sessions to what the concerns are of the parents in each district because the schools are different. So thank you for that. And then the last one is to comment on what other people have said and to reiterate, I'll try not to get emotional, about our faculty. We have to think of them.
Yeah, that's all right, Sarah. Thank you for your thoughts and comments. The faculty has to be part of this equation from a safety standpoint, just to maybe share some of where you're going with that. So definitely something that we need to be totally aware of. So thank you for sharing that. And we're all in the same boat with you, so don't worry about that. And thank you, Dr. Johnson. Appreciate it. Patty made a few comments. Patty's right here. I'm not sure if she said her connection is not great. There's a few things in here, Dr. Ryan, you may have seen in regards to maybe providing additional support and knowledge of Velax as that one option. And then also, there's another question about any consideration for siblings in different schools, whether they're at CMS and EHS with the half-days. If we have siblings in both buildings and they're not on the same scheduled track, there would be some potential transportation issues. So I don't know if you want to touch on those.
Yes, so I believe I answered both of those in the chat. Actually, the first part of her question, I responded with providing resources. I think that might have been, I think it was Sarah Gallagher's question as well on ensuring that we're going to help facilitate in connecting families who aren't ready to send their children back, that we're never going to abandon our families, and certainly we're going to be helpful there. The other was, I'm just getting to number two. If we have a schedule at CMS and EHS that is half-days, can consideration be given to families with siblings in the building? And we had agreed over when we were talking with the principals that the students would be manually scheduled at that point to ensure that that was the case, so that there would be some organization and coordination with families in that building so that you didn't have freshmen coming in the morning and a senior coming in the afternoon. We would do our best to ensure that they were coming at the same time.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Dr. Ryan. And a few of these things in the chat, I'm still just kind of bringing them forward because the chat only is going to the panelists and not all of the attendees, so to make sure that they hear some of these questions and also the answers there. So Carla also commented in here about Velax having curriculum for early elementary. They are K to 12 at this point. Dr. Ryan, is that correct? That was your answer in here as well?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Carissa, you had a question for the group?
I do. I know we still have plenty of questions to be answered, but many families' lives are in a holding pattern at this point, and it's contingent upon a final plan. And this isn't anything that we can rush, and I completely understand that. But can we provide the community with a target date for our final plan so they can begin planning or even restructuring their lives? When, and if not now, when can we provide that?
I understand that there's a demand. People wanted answers yesterday, but we hesitate at having any school district provide a date because we want the work to be purposeful and we want to make sure that we have enough input. I think as an internal group, we talked about this very question and when will families know what the school year is going to look like? It would be a lot easier if I could say that nothing was going to change between now and the beginning of school in terms of health conditions, guidelines, information coming from our community health partners, but I can't guarantee that that's not going to happen. It's our hope that at least by the middle of August, we know what our schools are going to look like. That may seem like a long time away, but we're only talking about three to three and a half weeks away, where there's an awful lot of work to be done by our school administrative teams and then approved and obviously providing input and feedback from our school boards, getting their guidance and getting the guidance of the community. So three and a half weeks is not a lot of time to get the work done, but I don't want to set a hard and fast date either. But that's the best way that I can answer that question for me, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carissa. And thank you, Dr. Ryan. Tim, you had a comment you wanted to share?
Yes, I do. I'd like to try to pull together some of the themes that have come here. So I think it's very important that we support options for families, whether that is returning to school in the school building or Velax or homeschool or whatever the case may be. And I think that there are several benefits to doing this. One is reducing the risk of infectious disease spread. Having students in different physical settings and not everyone coming from home to school and back to home every day is, helps to cut the risk of infection. Also, it's mentally healthy to choose a circumstance, to be in a circumstance of your choosing. And as we know, there's a lot of anxiety out there. And if people feel like they, you know, their options are limited and they feel like, well, you know, there's only one choice or, you know, only one practical choice for them, they'll feel bad about it. Also, we have very different family circumstances. We have some one- and two-parent households where the parents feel like they need to go to work and they want the parents in school. But then there are others, there are other families where that's not really a consideration. And we also have different educational preferences. There are some families who feel like it's important to get their children in a classroom with the teacher. But then we also have some segments of our population who found that for one or another reason that they, that they kind of liked online school. So I, again, I think there are several benefits and it would be best if our schools would help our families with those options.
Thank you very much, Tim. Appreciate your thoughts there. Jenny had another question. Jenny?
Yes. Okay. Just a couple of questions. Will we, if someone does test positive and goes home, I know that we don't know exactly how we're going to handle that, but will we be requiring negative tests before they can come back to school, whether it's a child or an adult? And then another, I'll just get all my questions out, if that's preferable. Another question, I am not sure if this is a question for the board or if it's something that will be addressed at the local level. I've got a bunch of questions that I'm saving for that. But one of the things that we were just getting started on was, was this kind of new reporting, this might just be a Kensington thing, so I apologize if it is, but the new report card system and all of that. If it's appropriate to ask here, I'm curious about whether we're going to be continuing on that and putting all of that on the features as well as this whole new mass of changes. And you can just put me off until Wednesday if that's the case. And then I also just want to reiterate again that I, we really need to revisit the discussion of masks at the elementary school level. I do understand that there are learning needs that need to be addressed, and I think that we can come up with some creative solutions to that. But why are we even bringing kids back and teachers back into the same room together if we're not doing absolutely everything to keep everybody as safe as possible? So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Appreciate that. Dr. Ryan?
So the second part, I mean, we will continue to discuss the masks for our elementary school students. I mean, that's certainly, you know, at least tonight with our open discussion, I'm hearing, hearing that being a very strong theme. It was anticipated that it would be a very strong theme. And it's encouraging because to me, what that signals is that people are ready for students to return to school, provided we have the acceptable and palatable health and safety guidelines in place. And there's nothing value-related that any of us would disagree with at all. It's just working through it to make sure that what we do for students in terms of teaching them about masks and finding a level of enforcement that makes sense. And I mean that in a non-punitive fashion, you know, is a real big conversation as well, certainly at the high school level where students who aren't wearing their mask in the hallway, what's that going to look like? What's that conversation going to be like? So there's a whole behavior around that K to 12 that we'll have to continue to discuss. I think the first question was, are we going to continue moving forward with some of the work that we started, whether it be the grade reporting using Alma or use of the learning management systems, Canvas and CSOW? And that, the answer to that is yes. That speaks to the seven principles that ground us, the seven principles of competency-based learning. It's work that can continue while we're temporarily changing the way that we're educating students. I want to make sure that we understand this is a temporary change. Sometimes we get so wrapped up in the conversations about what we're doing to address how we're teaching students in a health crisis that it becomes, begins to feel like this is a permanent shift. There needs to be some mainstay items in our return to school, and that has to be our focus on moving forward as a, as an SAU that is grounded in the belief of competency-based learning and reporting on progress and growth of individual students. And so that's work that's still going to be supported and still worked through at each of our schools. It does look different in each of the schools in terms of where each elementary school is in their work, and so that's certainly going to continue to be addressed and supported by the senior leadership team, as well as any of the people that we've had working as consultants on that.
There was one more question that kind of got buried at the beginning. Will we be requiring negative tests for those who have tested positive for COVID before they can re-enter the school buildings?
So I can answer that. That has changed pretty dramatically over the last couple of months in terms of returning with a negative test. So the current recommendations on the federal level are that if you have had a positive test and have symptoms, that you can return after 10 days from your initial symptoms and currently now 24 hours with no symptoms. If you had a positive test and had no symptoms, you can return after 10 days from when you tested positive, presuming that you can't know how much sooner prior to that positive test. So that's with our current testing model. That's with the sensitivity and specificity that we currently have with the tests that are available, which has significantly improved since the beginning of this. And that is really, the CDC continues to not look for that negative testing since it's a PCR-based test and just looking specifically for that evidence of coronavirus circulating. There's some evidence to show that those positive RNA pieces are still there significantly longer than just that 10-day period, but at low enough rates that while detectable are not transmittable. That's variable from person to person. For some folks, that has extended up to 30 days. Again, early on, we were talking about two weeks. It really looks like 10 days is that cutoff, but definitely seeing that 10 days is pretty conservative. And so we'll continue to watch that, but we're definitely finding that on a federal level, we're getting away from a negative test to return. And so I wouldn't, I don't expect that to be changing anytime soon.
Okay, thank you. And thank you too, to Dr. Ryan.
Thank you, Jenny. Appreciate it. Again, just so that all the attendees kind of know what's going on here, a lot of board members and all of the faculty and staff are thanking Sarah for her level of concern about to making sure we do things, you know, correctly for our faculty and staff as well as the students. And Jamie, I don't know if you want to comment on this, it looks like you shared a link where the school nurses had a call today with Dr. Chan, just some information there for us to read. So I've got a thumbs up from Jamie. I don't see any other requests for questions or comments in the chat right now, so it's a, it's been a fairly robust three-hour conversation that we've had at this point. There is at least one decision that needs to be made, and I believe Jamie, if I'm not mistaken, raised the question about the schedule and some extra time between the election and, you know, possible first day of school. So, Dr. Ryan, do you or anybody from the administrative side want to touch on that kind of comment? And then, you know, we need at some point to put a motion on the table here for the start of school.
Yeah, we certainly wouldn't object to September 10. You know, there's a lot of work to be done in terms of understanding ventilation and the difference between aerosol and breath droplets and what ventilation can and cannot do for you with regard to the two types of transmission. This is not an aerosol virus, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Johnson. This is a droplet virus, which ventilation only plays one small role in fighting this. The issue with the droplet is certainly surface contact. And so paying more attention to use of the Clorox electrostatic sprayers, the washing of surfaces, the surfaces and so forth, you know, the touching, the hand washing. Those are the layers that we're really putting a lot of stock in. Ventilation is very important. I have some information from our HVAC professional in the cooperative. Dan will be excited that I called him a professional. But certainly, increasing outdoor air ventilation with a lower population in the building, this increases the effective dilution ventilation per person. Visible demand control ventilation, further open minimum outdoor dampers, 24/7 circulation of air, the introduction of central air filtration to MERV 13 or the highest compatible filter racks, which as you would, you know, gas are more expensive and harder to get right now because everybody's moving toward that style of filter. toward that style of filter. So looking at, just trying to address Jamie's concern about making sure that the rooms are fully clean and sanitized prior to students returning, I'm not objecting to that. I'm just making sure that we're all aware of the, the magnitude of the level that the HVAC industry is considering its importance in adding that, that layer to mitigating risks. But we wouldn't object to the September 10th, and I don't think any of my colleagues nor teachers would, to have that extra day to prepare.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ryan, for sharing that. So I think at this point, again, the, the local decisions will be brought down to the local boards to where their meetings taking place, I think probably throughout all of next week with listening sessions and whatnot. But the one item that the joint board does vote on is the start date or the, the calendar for the entire district, which is why we're taking action on that this evening. So not to put you on the spot, Jamie, but do you have any motion you would care to put on the, on the floor? And then we can have some further discussion at that point.
Without seeing the full calendar, I would have the start motion to put the start of the 2021 FY 20, sorry, school year 2021, to have a new start date of September 10th, 2020.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. So we have a motion on the floor to change the start date of the 2021 academic year to September 10th. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
I see Jonathan and Thad. So we, Jonathan, we'll give it to you. Your hand went up first, but thank you, Thad. We appreciate it. So we have a motion and a second to officially have the start date be September 10th. Do we have any further discussion relative to the motion that's on the floor, looking at the chat box as well? I see that. Scott, do you have a question?
Oh, yeah, Travis. I was just wondering, with the move to originally was the eighth or ninth or now 10th, are we still planning on the same end date for school? Or are we pushing ourselves out into later into, into June?
We had not anticipated asking to extend the school year to make up those days.
And can I ask one follow up question?
Absolutely.
With, with going the AM and PM sessions on high school, it's kind of related. In my mind, they're getting half the amount of instruction. Is there any, because they're only going half, half day and they're not getting the full day, benefit of the full day of school? Is there going to be any modifications around that? Or, I don't know, I guess it's just a concern that I have that my incoming freshman who, you know, like everyone else, is going to be behind the curve and now we're only giving them maybe four hours of instruction per day. I don't know. That was just my question. Sorry.
No, no, fine, Scott.
I think it's a very valid, valid, valid question, Scott, and very valid concern. We looked at remote instruction and the level to which students exhibited any new learning. We know how difficult it was for our students in a remote instruction period. We know how difficult it was for staff. I think it would be widely supported that this phase in process of having students attending at least that concentrated half day every day is definitely a step in the right direction and will accelerate some of the learning in that regard. Our first concern, however, with getting students in is to assess their level of emotional health and certainly make sure that where they are in their own lives is a good spot. And that gives us the chance to assess that and then address that and then begin to introduce new learning once again. There's no expectation that a teacher on the first day just looks at the students and says, okay, open up page five, let's start. There's a lot of indoctrination or reindoctrination. A lot of our kids have gone through a significant traumatic experience. This is real trauma for a lot of our, our students as well as a lot of our staff members. Some of our board members exhibited some of that tonight. We all are working through some of those levels of emotion and anxiety. So understanding that half the time is not ideal, we find it to be more ideal than none of that in-person time for that connectivity. And we also, I believe, have such a professional core of classroom teachers that just as they have risen to the occasion in the past, they will rise to the occasion here. They're already thinking of ways in order to make, make this work to the best of their ability with, with everyone's help. And we certainly will support them in making sure that while the students are not in school, if they've already gone for their half day, that there's ample learning still going on, even though it may not be in the classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Great question. And thank you, Dr. Ryan. I had a similar question relative to just the state requirements, you know, losing the days upfront and all those shortening the days or, you know, the A and B schedule. I'm assuming there are no state implications or that's all being, there are waivers in place or things of that nature, Dr. Ryan?
That's correct. And as a matter of fact, on the state call today with the commissioner, the Department of Education has told all school districts that if they choose to delay their opening by three days, that that's a three day waiver period, much like when the governor closed the school buildings in March, that there was a five day transition period that they had built in. So one of the questions from a superintendent upstate was, will, will we need to adjust our calendar or will we need to adjust the number of days or hours that we've already submitted? And his reply to that was, no, you will not need to do any adjustments with the Department of Education relative to your calendar hours.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ryan. Jane, I see your question there, but if it's okay, I'm going to hold off on that till we wrap up the motion and then we'll come back to it. So don't let me forget that. But any other questions relative to the motion to have the start date be September 10? Not seeing anything else relative to the motion. We'll get to the other questions. Not seeing any hands up as well. So I guess we have a motion and a second to officially make the start date of school for SU 16, September 10th. Dr. Ryan, do you want a roll call vote on this? Are you okay with a hand and voice vote?
So we're required to have a roll call vote because it's a remote meeting. However, if it's going to be unanimous, you may, you could always reverse the roll call road and just vote and ask those who are in opposition to, to state their name. And that way it may be a little easier.
Yep. Okay. I thought that may be the case, so thank you for the clarification. So the motion is to be September 10th as our official start date. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand and keep it raised. Dr. Ryan and I both perused the screen. I see no one in opposition to the motion. Dr. Ryan, do you concur?
I concur.
All right. So all those in favor of the motion, it's unanimous, please raise your hands. It was officially voted in the affirmative. Thank you very much to Dr. Ryan. We've now adjusted the schedule for the start date to be September 10th for SU 16. Thank you very much for that. A couple more questions here before we get to the end of the meeting. Jane, in reference to two hour delays or snow days later in the year, would you like to comment on that?
I think if, I'm sorry, go right ahead, Jane.
Oh, no, no, no. If you saw, I just wanted to state the question so that the people that are on the call can hear it. So my question was, how are we managing the two hour delays, so any snow days? So this would be more applicable to like CMS in the high school where there could be a potential AB day situation. So if we do have a two hour delay, what happens to that morning group? Do they not have school that day? Or, you know, what are the scenarios that we're looking at for that? And then are we also considering having a, you know, our snow days be remote days? Remote learning days?
Yeah. So the first part of that question, I think, is going to be a great conversation at the cooperative board listening session as well as being wrestled, wrestled with, with cooperative school administrators and how we would approach that, certainly working with their board as well. So we're not sure just yet what that would look like, but as far as using snow days or not having snow day, I don't call snow days anyway, Jane. You know that. We do delays here, much to the chagrin of many. The, the discussion has been, now that we've done three and a half months of remote instruction, why would we ever need to take a snow day again? We would just make it a remote instructional day. It's not that simple. We certainly want to hear from our teachers on what that's going to mean and the impact on, on them in the event that in the middle of the night, the school day is canceled. However, teachers hadn't had the opportunity to prepare adequately their students for a remote instructional day. So that's a conversation that will continue with all of our districts across the board. But many districts are wrestling with that question as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ryan. Appreciate it. And then Allison has another question that she put up about the potential for students to zoom in on their off days or things like that. I don't know if you want to touch on that now, Dr. Ryan, or if it's something you can share comments with at a later point?
I do. We, we actually, we received a demo. We went through a demo last week with classroom technology that's pretty easy. It's plug and play. And Richard Pratt, our director of IT in the cooperative, also researched a different company that essentially could outfit our classrooms for about $2,000 per classroom. And that gives you the cameras that follow or can follow instructors around the room that naturally become interactive, that show a couple of different screens. So if there's a whiteboard, there's a camera aimed at the whiteboard while the, while the instructor is controlling, you know, what screen they're seeing and so forth and so on. The issues that we ran into right off the top, and I, we haven't given up on this, but some of the initial issues that we've run into are some of the student data privacy requirements that we're required to abide by. This would kind of blow it out of the water by having direct live views into the classroom. If we have students who are out and about, who are viewing live classroom demonstrations, we worry about the, I'm going to use the words data safety of the classroom teacher and what happens with the recording if a student is remote and is recording the screen and is recording that teacher. There could be some issues relative to, to what happens with that video and there are concerns from our teachers expressing that. So we want to go about this a little more sensitively than we initially had thought, understanding that at the higher ed level, there could be different or there are different student private, student data privacy policies. In the public schools, K to, K to 12, where we are required to have a parent sign off, every parent in a classroom, if that classroom is going to be filmed or audio recorded. It also means that the teacher would have to sign off as well. And so there's a lot to, to look at with regard to that. We would prefer working through a remote platform using pre-recorded lessons that could be made available. So we'd flip the classroom, so to speak, using the technology that's available to us. We could certainly manage that a little more effectively for security, but that's all being explored as part of the work that teachers did a few weeks ago and will continue to do in preparing for any kind of remote instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Appreciate that. And then the last comment or question that I see here in terms of teachers starting in August, and then Dr. Ryan will defer to you on that one as well.
Yes, teachers will begin on the same day that they were originally scheduled to begin. That's the idea because we want to be able to use that time that's already set aside and budgeted in the next contract year, the next fiscal year, to have teachers slowly phasing back into their classroom, certainly going through the trauma skill training, working through that empathy work, making sure our teachers are readjusting to the classroom. You know, I don't have to share that, that in schools, school faculty and staff are the other family for our teachers. And it's going to be so important to get them back together and working with each other in a safe fashion that we're going to need that time. So teachers will, our, our plan moving forward is why we've moved the student start date is to have our, our teachers start on the originally scheduled start date within their bargaining unit.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. So with that, I have one other comment that I touched on with a few other board members, but I've had a lot of community members ask me this question. Many of you may have gotten the same question, but just food for thought for all of us as board members. It has been brought to me, you know, multiple times that if we are discussing returning these students into the building at some point in September, there's, I think, a community expectation that we will also then be having our board meetings in a public setting where we physically go to that meeting. I think there would be some questions if the boards continued to meet via Zoom while we were sending our students into the building. That's been brought to my attention a few times. It may not be in the building. We'll refer to Dr. Ryan on that. We may have to find another location to keep the fewest adults out of the building as we can, but just food for thought because it's definitely something that has been brought up to, to me more than once. So just wanted to share that with, with the, the group here as well. Dr. Ryan, do you have any other thoughts before we try to wrap things up?
I did. I had a couple actually. She's been waiting so patiently and as, as far as I'm concerned, with no disrespect to anybody who's on this call, the most important person that I think everybody needs to hear from is our student Mallory Skinner. And there's a big smile because she's been waiting for her name to be called. And I'm hoping that Mallory, if you can unmute yourself, I'm just, I'd like it if you could just share your thoughts from a high school student perspective of everything that we've talked about tonight, if you're comfortable doing that and getting to know you, I think you are.
Yeah. Um, honestly, the main thing that I thought of is that like, that consistency is definitely the, like, the less, the more consistent thing are the less, I know that like, like when we first like moved to remote, it was definitely.
Hey, Mallory? So this is, this is Travis Mallory.
Kind of good.
We all really want to hear what you have to say, so I don't know if you could lean in maybe a little bit more because you're the person we probably want to hear most and we're having a very hard time.
Some teachers are more lenient, others.
From all of us leaning in, it looks like I'm not the only one that's having a really hard time hearing Mallory, unfortunately.
Is it better now?
Oh, that's much better.
Oh, no.
It was.
Well, uh, okay. Well, I said that the consistency is kind of like the more like, the, um, less stressed like we are, I think here, everything will flow. And then the kind of main thing that I was thinking about was that like consistency in these routes, classroom we have to go to is, so that's all I thought of.
Yeah. Mallory, thanks for, for sharing what, you know, anything, any of your thoughts and anything with, with everybody that's here on this call. And Dr. Ryan, thank you so much for bringing a student into the conversation. Unfortunately, with the sounds issues, we couldn't hear a lot of that, but we certainly appreciate all your thoughts, Mallory. Dr. Ryan, anything else?
One thing that was stated earlier, I think a few of our board members might have mentioned it, that the local planning being left to the school boards, that, that's actually not our intent. That's not something that we indicated. What we have planned for is that our, our local school administration, the team of educators that they put together with support from members of the senior leadership team at each at the central office, all working together to develop the best possible plan and making those recommendations to the school board, not necessarily asking the school board to drive that or do, do that work, but absolutely receiving plans and receiving recommendations and making suggestions or providing feedback on improving them and what can be done, what can't be done. There are certainly going to be some financial decisions that need to be made by local boards. There may be some policy implications that local boards are going to need to take up. There certainly will be some staffing issues that they're going to have to wrestle with, but it's not going to be done in a vacuum. It's certainly going to be done with, or in conjunction with the teams that are working together, in conjunction with the community members who are providing input and feedback as well. So I, I don't want it to seem as though we're leaving it just to the local school boards high and dry. We as educators have felt like that with some of the state authorities in, in our planning where the guidelines that we've received have been fairly general and vague, which you could chuckle and say that even our plan is general and vague. However, the level of detail and the amount of research that's gone into this plan is much more than I would have guessed that we needed to, to do, but seeing the information that was coming from our, our organizations that, that lead our state, it was necessary for that. So I don't want our boards to feel like they're going to be alone. If anything, it'll be quite the contrary. The other, the other piece is just ensuring that everybody understands that, number one, The other piece is just ensuring that everybody understands that, number one, this was so helpful to us to gather this feedback and to get the input and to understand what the sentiment is, because that's what we've asked you to do, and that's what we're going to continue to ask you to do. But to also remember that no matter how innovative an idea is, even if it's so far outside the box that it's not even on the same shelf, that it needs to be weighed and measured with the practical ability to continue to educate our students. Sometimes we talk from a health crisis perspective in that we're trying to solve the health crisis within our schools. What we're trying to do is educate the students to the best of our ability, given the framework of safety for students, staff, and families, to the best of our ability. And so I don't claim to be a doctor, at least not that kind of doctor. Our team at the SAU office does not claim to know much about the medical side of this. We rely on our professionals, some of whom are on the call tonight, some of whom are perhaps watching or certainly will continue to be contributing. We have many parents in the community who are either medical doctors or medical researchers who have provided input and feedback. So I just really want to reassure everyone that this plan, being a community plan, is going to help drive us towards the best possible solution for all of our families in each of our schools. We're going to arrive at no perfect solution, but one that we're all going to be able to work through, one that we're all going to be able to live with, one that we're going to feel safe about, because we want to protect our children, which is our number-one priority. We want to protect our staff members, which is our number-one A priority, and we want to protect our families, which is our number-one B priority. So considering all of that, I just want to thank you on behalf of the senior leadership team to be able to present this plan tonight, to allow over 500 community members to pay attention and listen, to receive the questions and the comments from our board members. And for Travis, for you facilitating this, this was not easy, so we do appreciate that. And with that, I would conclude our presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, certainly appreciate all of that, and it goes without saying, you know, thank you to you and, you know, the whole team for getting us to this point with the plan that we've looked at this evening. I think, you know, all the work and effort that went into it is greatly appreciated. We'd like to thank Mark Whitney, who I believe had to drop off the call as well, for all of his time and efforts to continue to work with us on that. And of course, Dr. Johnson, on behalf of all of us here in SU 16 and throughout our communities, thank you for all of your tremendous time and energies and everything that's gone into this. My guess is that when you signed up to be our consulting physician, it was not with the expectation that you would be spending probably more than 40 hours a week working with Dr. Ryan on a full-time plan, so thank you very much for everything that you've done for us and continue to do. Great, appreciate it. Seeing no other questions or comments, and I haven't had dinner yet, probably like many of you, so we will be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
I see Scott with a motion to adjourn. I see Helen with a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much, everybody. Everybody have a wonderful night and take care.
That was a roll call vote, of course, right?
Absolutely, that was a roll call vote. There was nobody opposed to the adjournment.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan.